Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting. Actually, the tri-meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, and also in attendance are members of Stormwater. This meeting is subject to the revisions, additions prior to the meeting. Zoom at live?
No, the Zoom is being recorded.
And this meeting is being recorded for the public. This agenda is subject to revisions, additions prior to the meeting. There is no public input for this meeting. I will call the order first of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Pacheco.
Present.
Mr. Karen.
Present.
Chairman Hao is also present. Would the Board of Health like to call there?
Do we need to call the order as well? Yes, okay. So I'd like to call the order, the Board of Health joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. It's Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty, and we're currently at Old Town Hall. At this time, I'd like to call for a roll call. Nicole Mello.
Oh, Pacheco.
Thank you very much. President from Stormwater, or representing Stormwater this evening, this is Nancy Gulat and Mr. James Agia. Could we all rise for a pledge of public?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. On the agenda this evening is a discussion of the Health Department's restructuring. And this evening, primary focus of the meeting will be the role of Stormwater and how it fits into the Health Department. Mr. Mullin?
Yeah.
Did you have anything that you wish to add before we?
No, we've had. No, other than, like as everyone knows, I believe since two thousand nine, we've had our responsibility of Stormwater within the Board of Health roles. Oh, you know, like as we have really moved forward and have noticed in the last few years, the, oh, you know, yeah, like really like the resources and the like capacity management of those like responsibilities and the Board of Health and when the Health and Stormwater agent, they, oh, you know, have very much evolved. So like we want to really like evaluate where we are and how all of that really like fits in. Oh, yeah. Oh, to how we go forward and how we really make it fit in our going forward too. So that's really, that's really what brings us here.
Thank you. Mrs. Gulat, sorry if I'm putting you on the spot, but as I look around this room, no one has a better understanding of the formation of Stormwater and its relationship with the Board of Health and the town of Dyton than you. Could you give us a little bit of background?
Before we get to Stormwater, I've been thinking a lot about this. It's restructuring of Board of Health. And I don't want anyone to get offended by what I'm going to say. There was no administrative leadership at the Board of Health. And I believe this came about when we split the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health. When we were, when we were Board of Selectmen, held both positions. We had a chairman of the Board of Selectmen, a chairman of the Board of Health, and a clerk to both boards. So my first year, Richard Hegman, Tom Pius, respected chairman, and I was the clerk of both boards. We were working selectmen. We didn't have a town administrator. We only had one person in the office. And pretty much when we weren't there, she was the one that was kind of keeping everything up in the air. Tom Pius would be in the auditorium, he'd stop in during the day. I would stop in during the day and I worked from home at night. When we split the two boards at the same time, almost, we got administration, full-time administration for the Board of Selectmen. We didn't do that for the Board of Health. So when the Board of Health left, it took everything with them that was being done by the Selectmen and the Board of Health. That worked for a while when Tom Pius, who was chairman of the Board of Health more than once, transitioned into the new position because he worked, knew what those honor of Board of Health, so forth, so on. When I say there is no administration, we have, we have underneath the townspeople, we have a board of selectmen with an administrator. And then in every department, we have a department head and either a foreman or something, lieutenants, sergeants. There's nobody underneath the Board of Health to handle, if you will, the day-to-day operation of the entire operation. At the last meeting, the meeting before that, when I came, there was a a spreadsheet that showed all these departments and the responsibilities, for lack of a better term. And I started to go through it and said, this is, I don't have time to do this tonight. But I really think we have to look at structure, the administrative structure of the Board of Health. If Tommy's out, he's got a foreman. If either chief are away at a meeting or something, they've got people. The library has a board of trustees and a director. Also on aging, everybody has got somebody at an administrative level, except the Board of Health. So as we look at all of the tasks that fall under the Board of Health, without administration, it's kind of pick and choose where we're going to put this and give this to somebody and do this somewhere else. I think that you really need to look at some kind of administrative structure under the Board of Health. Day-to-day, full-time, part-time, I think it's, I mean, as I say, Tom Pius could do it part-time because he'd been doing it for years, as I had done when I was chairman of the Board of Health. It was when I was chairman of the Board of, oh, excuse me, no, that was, I was clerk. That was my first year. So because we had a Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, and each board has a clerk, I was clerk for those two boards my first year. That's when Stormwater hit the fan. The town was fined in late two thousand six, early two thousand seven for not being in compliance with its notice of intent. And they had the fine that already was eleven, it was, it was three thousand dollars. I got elected and came on board and I already had the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge project that I was working on. The previous board, I had volunteered to be the liaison and they appointed me to that. So I already had that project going. And as everybody knows, that was, that was my baby. If nothing else got done in this town, that bridge was going to get built. Time after I got elected, they found out we had gotten fined. And they were going to, then the EPA was going to continue to find this town every year. So it was three thousand the first year, it was going to go to fifteen, it was going to go to forty-five. I mean, mind-boggling numbers unless we comply with the notice of intent. I got elected in the early, what, March, April? Didn't find out why we got fined until about one o'clock because nobody could tell me or nobody would tell me. That's how I ended up calling the attorney, then issued a letter for the fine, and she had no idea. I called the head of the EPA and she told me. I told her I was taking it on. She said, I will help you any way you can. So that was that. The town had hired an engineering firm to test and plan film. They also were the ones that filed the notice of intent, the board of seven ten, the one we just filed. What is going on? So I was just trying to make plans. You lay out for ten years all these things you hope to accomplish. And you filed, as you know, you're going to be talking about the MS four, you filed with me in. And it is the EPA progress report on, did you meet your requirements in, let's say, year three or four, depending on what you're reporting on? A lot of communities are behind, but as long as you're making progress, they're not going to find you. What happened with Dyton, there were multiple years when the MS four went in, which was filed by the engineering firm who was being paid very well to get us fined. The report stated that as far as progress in any areas, we didn't have the time, the money, or the staff. Well, you can't keep saying that. So anyhow, wrote the bylaw, wrote the regulations, got that all done. And originally, we had mentioned duties that we were planning board that dealt with home developments, big developments, things like that. Solar farms weren't even in the picture at that time. Our planning board would take responsibility for enforcing the Stormwater regs, rules of regs. And Concom would also have a role, depending upon, obviously, where wetlands were involved. Well, what happened was complaints started coming in. And it was clear that during construction phases of various projects, I'll call them, Stormwater was not being handled properly within the regs and there were some waived regs. We don't waive regs. I mean, we've been asked to, like I say, I'm talking about the current Stormwater committee. We don't waive regs. We try to accommodate people, but we also hold them to what those regs and what that bylaw says. So then along came solar farms. And the requirements on their Stormwater of solar farms, it's monumental because it's not just the clearing of the land and the, you know, planting and all that, but there is so much involved and it involves seven major departments. That's why we formed a committee with seven members that represent the major people that would be involved, would be the housing developments, a Stormwater. If we didn't have this committee, I honestly don't know how the Board of Health could function at all. We're a subcommittee of the Board of Health. And as that, we handle at least Stormwater. It's a seven-member board and it is a lot of work. And it's not, oh, we're going to meet once a month and we're going to discuss stuff. No, it's instantly you've got to respond to something. Call comes in, whether it's Mr. Agia who's on our committee, Mr. Pilling, whoever gets the call, it's, we got to go out there, we got to check this out, we got to do a report, we got to issue a cease and desist. Back in the day, cease and desist by the Health, Board of Health were basically for health code violations. Not Stormwater regulations, not building, building, when I say building, I'm talking about building a road in a wetland area. So take, if you pull Stormwater back, because it's sort of an independent committee that works under the Board of Health. But the Board of Health, per se, doesn't tell us what our tasks are simply because the way it's structured, the chairman of the Board of Health is one of the seven, Mr. Pilling is one of the seven. So there's the connection to the Board of Health and anything we need. And because I've been on the Board of Health, you know, I understand what the connection is there. But when you look at the entire department, if you didn't have this committee to handle Stormwater, it would be even worse in the Board of Health. Because there'd be nobody to handle the day-to-day Stormwater stuff. If a call comes in, someone will respond. I usually get a call or an email or something on and say, hey, we got to go to, we got to go to Brook Street. Okay. Back in the day, the calls that came in were Tom Pius called me at night and say, hey, we got to go to this location, there is a major violation, the police said they have to respond. And those would be really health and welfare situations, living conditions, animals, and who use.
Who coordinates the response?
Back in the day, because the Selectmen were the Board of Health and it was, it seemed like Tom was always the chairman when the calls came in because he called me.
But I mean, today.
It goes into the Board of Health office and I assume Ross gets the call and depending upon the nature of it, it was, if it's animal-related, it'd probably go to Stacy. If it's animal-related, if it's a hubble, unsanitary, everything bad you could think of. Well, obviously, Tom will be involved. The other members of the Board of Health, what if I? The main connection that the Stormwater committee has to the Board of Health, other than come to the meeting every month, it's when it's crisis time. For example, the housing development that popped up on the Segregance River in time. I heard about that. We were out in the woods off of William Street looking at a legal billing along the Segregance River. And I was told about the issue. I was on board selectmen at the time. And when we looked into it, yes, there was a condo development being built in time but on the Segregance River. The community system was not what we would consider acceptable. So anyhow, we contacted Tom Concom because it was before them. And we worked it all out. But when I say crisis time, we got the plans for that housing development. They weren't acceptable. It was Mr. Pilling who went through the plans and then wrote, referenced everything that was wrong with it, including this thing, the backup and the citations from the general laws and from the state Health Department, public health laws. We worked through it, we got it resolved. Set of seven units, seven buildings of three units, six were built. Then lo and behold, next thing we know, it's in the paper because now they've drawn plans and they want to build seven. So we were backing it. But with Mr. Pilling and Mr. Agia, we were able to meet with the engineer for that project and work out the appropriate range for that seventh building. So we let Tom Concom know, they agreed to do what we had said, so it got resolved. That came out of the blue totally. But somebody told me about it. I had no idea it was going to turn into what it turned into. And you were at some of the meetings, so you know the scope of what it was. Main concern was they hadn't notified the town of Dyton. We have water rights to the Segregance River, way up there. Now we've gone down here. But, and it was the well field off of, excuse me, Wall Street, that's close proximity to where they were. So that was a situation that was an emergency in nature. We've got to do something, we've got to overtake Concom, we've got to get this stopped so we can renew it. When I say stopped, not stop the project. Stop everything so that Dyton could get a chance to weigh in on it, point out what was wrong, what needed to be corrected. And we were able to do that. But I don't know how many sets of plans that Mr. Pilling viewed. Because each time we went, the engineer for the developer would come back with more changes and Mr. Pilling would review those and those didn't need Stormwater regs, they didn't need state regs and stuff. But it all got worked out. So then things kind of, I wouldn't say slowed down, but were less demanding instantly, instant action. You got to do something. You can't put it off till the next meeting. There's a problem right now. It had been approved by the planning board in time. And we, Tom Concom opened the hearing up again. So that got resolved. But that's the instantaneous kind of thing that best we have. We issued a cease and desist order for the project up behind New Jones because
That was at a joint, all the members of Stormwater?
A cease and desist?
Yes.
Not initially. No, I didn't have an emergency meeting. Mr. Pilling contacted me and Mr. Calvonia because it was also a violation of the Wetlands Act. So, and it all dealt with lack of communication on part of the contractor to the workers they brought in. The road had been cut, and I say cut, we could walk it. It was still rough, you couldn't, really couldn't get a vehicle on it. There was one area that was very narrow that even the fire chief weighed in on and the problem was, not only was it very narrow, but there were wetlands, but there was a rural pool. And so we, everyone agreed what was done, so forth and so on. Then we brought in the crew to do the work. Didn't tell the people who were in the work about the problems. So when it was inspected, then it, solar farms get inspected frequently. Mr. Pilling and Mrs. Calvonia, he might call me and say, hey, we got to go to Brook Street. Tom Ferry might call and say, I want you to look at something. Mr. Agia might tell me that something's going on, he wants me to go look at it. Because of the nature of the violations, violation of the Wetlands Protection Act, we should cease and desist until they drew, now, once you create a problem, you just don't go back and fix it. Now you're going to draw a plan to correct the mess you made and it has to be acceptable. So at that point, when I was told about the seriousness, not only of what we were concerned about, but the Wetlands Protection Act, I said to Mrs. Calvonia, all right, I have Concom take the lead on this. It was violation of the Wetlands Protection Act. That's higher up here, okay? Down here is our rules and regs.
What I'm trying to determine in this is what Mr. Pillings roles are. You know, I heard a lot of talk and I know from that issue on Winthrop Street. He played a major role and the people in Tottenham were very impressed by his engineering skills. I think we're all quite aware of that skill set that he brings to the table. And a cease and desist, does he make a recommendation or can he as an agent issue that cease and desist?
He can issue it.
He can do it.
He can do it on his own, as can Concom. But because we work on this together, because of the Wetlands Protection Act, there were other things that have occurred that may start out as Stormwater that will say to Concom, take the lead on this and we will be with you. When you get through with it, we'll be involved. We get cases of illegal dumping, that that has happened. That one is so, let's say the owner is so uncooperative that we brought in D E P. And D E P made a site visit. Now, Concom has taken the lead on that and they brought in D E P, so now we've got a state agency involved. But Concom is, is owners involved too. So at each meeting every month, we have updates on projects to find out what's happening with this. That's one of the ones that we get. The main thing with, with Mr. Pilling is I feel that whenever I need him for something, and I don't ask him to do stuff that's frivolous. But when a situation arises and I say to him, I need you for this, I don't care what you're working on, I need you for this. I am pulling him away from the Stormwater, excuse me, I'm pulling him, the Stormwater is taking priority and I'm pulling him away from the Board of Health. He could be doing other things than Board of Health. He might have Title V inspections to do. But one of the things that I have talked about is that, getting back to the old days when the Selectmen were the Board of Health, they didn't do Title Fives. The board didn't, the town didn't, yes. We had somebody do Title Fives. We had somebody inspect the septic systems. When the plans were drawn for septic systems, we paid an engineer per plan to review the plans, send them in with notations. Some of them would be passed with recommendations, which means the person going out to do the inspection should follow up to make sure those recommendations were done. It might be a straight pass, this is fine, go ahead, build it, so forth and so on. It might come back and say, basically, no way, this has got to be redrawn, it doesn't meet this requirement and this requirement. And that particular person obviously is a fully licensed engineer. As a matter, he works for DOT. But that's how some of that worked, that the Board of Selectmen dash slash Board of Health, the three of us, that's how we get that work done. With, with the separation of the two boards, I know Mr. Pius said, okay, so we're going to bring some of the things in house that we were sending out. The inspections, the review of plans. Just the review of plans is, it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of extra hours. In getting back to what I said about no administrative leadership, when he's not there because he's out doing something or I've got him, or we're going to cite this in somewhere, everything has to continue in the Board of Health. There's only one person left in the office, okay? And yes, she can handle some of that stuff, the routine stuff, you know, you're, you're, you need supplies, you need to leave a message and all that. But there are other things that require the skills he has. Because, again, my personal opinion is there's no administration, there's no department head under the Board of Health, and there's no foreman.
That may change.
So, and I'm, as I say, I'm, I'm looking at this strictly from a management position. I'm not looking at it any other way, but I looked at the way it was when I was held one of those roles. And then I looked at the structure of every other department or major committee in this town. And I'm thinking, there's a space here that's not filled in. Okay, the that person is, has to be responsible for oversight of everything. They're also going to have hands-on work in. Okay, they're just not going to oversee things. And I think what, what should come out of this study with the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health is figure out how to fill the gap. Figure out how, whether you call it the department head or a foreman. If you equate Tom Ferry in his department, he's the guy in charge, so he's like the Board of Health. He's the top layer of administration. Under him, there is another layer of administration, hands-on, and it's the foreman. If he's away, that foreman knows, he's going to enlist. And he's got Tom's phone number on calls, be a dial probably. But think of all the departments in this town, they're all structured that way.
We are, we are looking at restructuring and that restructuring from a leadership point of view may, depending on how the three of us feel and we can work it out with the union, would involve Mr. Pilling and would involve Rosalyn in some capacity in that structure. And possibly the Mrs. Mello. But that's part of the charge of the Board of Selectmen. And that's one of the aspects that we're doing. It's not just about Mr. Pilling. First, we're going to determine what things should continue to be a part of the Board of Health, such as the Animal Control Officer was recently removed. Emergency preparedness. Tonight, we're talking about Stormwater. Earlier, we heard from Commonwealth when they spoke, and it was their recommendation to us that Stormwater remain a part of the Board of Health. Obviously, that carries a lot of weight. How we reorganize that and the duties and responsibilities to the Board of Health, that's still up in the air. And that's what this meeting is tonight. How the leadership plays out. I have my own personal feelings, but I also have two colleagues. What makes it even more complicated isn't Todd. Rosalyn is a physician, she's in the union. So the union is obviously going to have a voice in the conversation. So. We're taking it step by step, and in addition, the other is a contract for Mr. Pillings. That's also part of what our goal is through this.
I haven't addressed any duties that Roz does, simply because Roz is our support. She's the person who takes care of posting, she's the one that takes the messages that come into the Board of Health for stormwater. She's the one that does the minutes, the posting, the scheduling, all the stuff that our committee needs in order to function.
You said something though, to me, was huge, from a leadership point of view. When I asked you who coordinates the stormwater response, and you didn't say Todd, you said Rosalyn.
She's probably the first point of contact, unless person reaches out to a stormwater committee member. That example I gave you of being in the woods out off of William Street along the river. Uh, I was approached by another committee member. And then, there were two other townspeople that have served in various capacities, said, hey, you know what's going on? And I said, I've heard about it, get into it, okay? So that one, I would say is unique, because it just so happened at the time and place, it came up. But, um, when the calls come in. Or the other thing is, Mrs. Caldonia might go out for, um. Well, the one on, the multiple ones we have on the filled-in railroad bed. Uh, she was not actually out doing stormwater work, conservation, review about plants and stuff, wetlands. And saw the problem, and brought that to us. But the other thing too is, depending upon what the problem is, if somebody's gonna act instantly, okay? It's usually him, or it might be Mr. Agia, alright? Or it might be Mr. Ferry, or it might be all three of them. And I think the. The key people on the Stormwater Committee that I must rely on 24/7, uh, Mr. Ferry, Mr. Agia, and Mr. Pillings. Simply because of their areas of expertise. Do I bring them all together at the same time? Not necessarily, although we did for the Dora Estates thing, because of the nature of it. But, um, I also know that if I get in touch with one or three of them, or whatever. They're the ones that have the background and the information to automatically act. And something that might start over the stormwater, might end up with Mr. Agia and the history department. All of the other people on that committee contribute to us and help with decisions and all that. But, when I think of on the ground running, those are the three people I think of, simply because of their strategic nature of what they do. So, in thinking of, but again, two of those gentlemen have their own departments. They operate those departments, and in case of, in the street plan, there is a foreman, okay? If something comes up, I'm not gonna go to the Board of Health, I'm gonna go to Todd Pillings, because he's there, okay? And he's the guy with the knowledge that I need, and he's the person who's probably going to, if it's gonna be a cease and desist or something else. He's gonna be able to give me the technical stuff I need, all that we have to do. So, uh, that's. That's a strategic position within the structure of the board, the Department, Health Department, the Department of Health. I'll call it a department, okay, because he's not on the board, but he's under the purview of the Board of Health. Okay, so, um. His duties, his job description, whatever's gonna come out of this. I think should recognize a leadership role. The Board of Health, as it currently exists. Is learning. Because there are so many faces that fall under the Board of Health. I feel confident that the Board of Health doesn't have to learn everything about stormwater, because I think we've got a good working group. By the same token, there's a member of the Board of Health on that. And sits at our meetings, and if she's absent, one of the other members should be there to participate. So, because we are a subcommittee of the Board of Health. We have a chairman, and we have structure, and we have all that. And we have our regular meetings, and we make reports and all that. And we have to report, our connection directly is with Mr. Pillings. Not with the Department of Public Health or the D E P, it's with the EPA. Because EPA has privacy for stormwater.
But that's done through the Stormwater Subcommittee?
Yes, so the Stormwater Subcommittee, the Subcommittee of the Board of Health has its own structure.
Right.
So we can, we operate almost, not totally, almost independently. And that's why we're responsible for everything stormwater, including filing the notice and intent that went in four years ago. And filing the MSO. All the other functions that happen. Whether it's solid waste, whether it's public health, whether it's related to animals and, and, uh. Living conditions and pandemics and all that stuff. That really falls to the Board of Health. So. Again, what I'm saying is, his role is vital to the Stormwater Committee. If I lost, in all honesty, if I lost any of those three, we would be in trouble. I also, as you know, reached out to the two committees that, for a while, looked like I wasn't gonna have anybody, planning and conservation. Because it's important that they be in there, because I want their. They aren't the people that I call and say, we got a problem, or they call me and say, we got a problem. But, we need their input, because we've got all those boards and committees that are, we kind of are interconnected. So that's why I was so insistent on getting those two committees or boards back online.
But what you're saying is. You need Todd Pillings, the engineer, not Todd Pillings, the Board of Health agent. It's that.
Well, we call him the health agent, because the chairman of the Board of Health is on our committee. So, in effect, it's not like we're loading the committee with two members from the Board of Health.
No, no, I'm just taking.
Technically, yes.
Skill set.
The person who attends the meetings from the Board of Health, whether it's the chairman or one of the members in her absence. Representing the Board of Health, when he is at our meeting, he's the technical person for everything uh, related to stormwater and, and runoff and. And, um, we have a member of the Concomite, a voting member, but we also have the Concomite agent present. So, um. And she works closely with him too. So, when I look at this, um. I'm comfortable with his role and what he does for us. Not always comfortable saying to him, I don't care what you're working on, I need you for this. As in the case of Dora Estates, I think definitely we've done, did that, but I'm not sure. But if something comes up with a solar farm, or some other thing like that. And he's the guy I need because of his engineering background, yeah, you're absolutely right. That, his role with that engineering degree is really as, as strategic as when I ask Mr. Agia to do something, or when I say to, uh, Tom Ferry, hey, Tom. That situation here, and sometimes it's all three of them, uh, like when we were, um. When we were talking about the, um. The initial visit for, um, Dora Estates, the illegal dumping down on the railroad or in the railroad bed. So, yeah, whatever comes out of his job description. That's a biggie for the Stormwater Committee. I don't, I don't know, I realize he's just Title V, and, um. He reviews the septic plants, and he goes out when they do the test holes and all that. And he does them on a schedule. I'm not sure that he gets the instantaneous calls, I need you right away, I need you to drop what you're doing. Which has happened, uh, several times, maybe a number of times with stormwater. Depending upon what the.
Right.
By, is, or what the disaster is, or what just came to light that was buried. Literally. So, yeah, so, so, um. Yes, his role on the Stormwater Committee is strategic, no question about it.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, uh, so Peter and I used to be on the CBA. And we did, I don't know, six or seven forty Bs, I don't remember exactly how many.
Few.
But in each of those developments, we created a fifty-three G account. So that, we weren't engineers, we weren't going to review stuff. Can you tell me how many fifty-three G accounts have been? Add with stormwater?
One.
Either the solar farms or developers?
One, and we just got it, because we need a third party to review, um, Clearway. Clearways.
So my question, if I can follow up with that, before we get, go down this path here. Why hasn't there been more fifty-three Gs, why are the taxpayers having to pay? Him, uh, to review these things when we can have a fifty-three G account, and the taxpayers don't pay for them? And, and it's allowed?
It's part of his job.
I, I get that, but he, he's also overworked, so.
I absolutely agree.
So, we're trying to come, I understand that with the Todd situation, we couldn't create a fifty-three G, that wasn't our conservation, that wasn't our planning.
We could have if we wanted.
Well, then why didn't we then?
We didn't have time.
This, you're missing, I'm not being critical. You've got to understand, everything stormwater, the rain comes down, it goes down the ground, it runs down the street, so what? That's the simple explanation. The reason why he is so strategic is because when you have to take immediate action. Which you don't have to do on forty Bs. You have your meetings, you discuss things, you talk to developers, and furthermore, forty Bs tell stormwater where to go. Now, um, strawberry fields, even though they repeatedly told us, we don't even have to talk to you. We're doing this as a criticism. Uh, but the interesting thing was, we put everything right in. The, uh, CBA asked us to do it. I'm finding some concerns about strawberry fields that have been documented. We sent them to, now that it's gone to D E P for review, we sent them our comments. The gentleman that owns that, um, went aside and yelled on the other one night, because he says, why are you doing this? I said, because we have to, because we have to, okay? If every concern we have about your project is gonna be documented. Yes, you can ignore us, this is before, they kept saying that we're gonna go for a secret seating order. But you know what, it's gonna be documented, because if there were problems in the future. Hold yourselves. It's, it's. It's the immediacy of when he's needed, that's related to stormwater, that a fifty-three G isn't needed. The reason we asked for a fifty-three G this time, is because we have time to do it.
I don't think he's had much time to do many of these things, but a fifty-three G account would, they would set up the plans for the stormwater, right? That, they would decide how that project would have to deal with the stormwater, which is what we're having him do right now, or reviewing that.
Mr. Pillings, if I may, um, so when I first started here, Planning Board and Conservation Commission each had their own fifty-three G reviewer. But neither one of them was reviewing plans and the drainage calculations for compliance with stormwater. They were only reviewing for compliance with guidance regulations for the Planning Board of Conservation by law. So, we're going back a couple of years now, so I was doing more of an in-depth review for stormwater compliance. What has happened over the last year or two, we had a meeting, we got everybody sitting down. We've changed review engineers at the Planning Board, and it's been included in their review, that they're reviewing drainage for compliance for stormwater. So, I don't review the drainage calculations, I'm more of a bird's eye view for protection of the town. I'm not looking at whether it was, you know, grass new or grass old or whatever, you know, that, I'm not doing that. I'm not spending weeks reviewing the calculations, I'm more looking again at the bird's eye view. Obviously, Dora Estates was a different story, we didn't have time on fifty-three G, wouldn't have been able to review it in the one week timeline that we had, so that was, that was part of why that was there, but. We have been correcting that, and fifty-three G, Planning Board and Conservation each have their own reviewer, and they do it, this one that we're just doing now. Because Planning Board and Conservation Commission had already issued their permits, but they did it without test bits. When we went into test bits under stormwater, they had to change the design, so we got involved, because it wouldn't have changed the special permit that they had.
Are you talking about the solar farm?
Yeah.
On that.
That's, that's the only reason we have a fifty-three G in that respect, is because the other boards, for them to reopen based on the changes in the middle of the field, and it didn't change span increment. Was why we felt that stormwater should be the ones in charge of the fifty-three G.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon?
I don't want to just simplify things, uh, Nithi was a great, great talking with you. Is your answer to a lot that goes on, just an assistant brought into the Board of Health? Staff?
Somebody that. When you think about the relationship on Mr. Mullins' Board of Select. Obviously, it's a higher level of administration, because technically. The Board of Selectmen is responsible for everything that goes on in this town. The administrator, obviously, is the next level. He doesn't have to do all that work, but he has to know what's going on, when they're elected or appointed boards. One of those boards is the Board of Health, okay? Which in effect falls under the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator, in the, in, if you would do the line staff. What I'm saying is, whether you call it some kind of an assistant or whatever. If the Board of Health, the three members, are like Tom Ferry, or the police chief, or the fire chief. In Tom's case, there is a foreman under him. We know that the structure in the, uh, Fire and Police. Especially, they're twenty-four seven, so they've got people on each shift. Um, but any of them know what to do, and then the Fire Department has some other, uh. Non-full-time people that hold appointed positions. But the structure is there, and when I look at the overall operation of the Board of Health, the office, and everything that falls under them. There's no one, what you call it, in charge, or oversight, or whatever. Again, not to the level that Mr. Mullins is doing, because he's got this much to take care of. But somebody who's got the Board of Health at this level, knows everything that's going on, knows what's, how this thing works. And that the, uh. All of the work that needs to be done is getting done. By the same token, if somebody were to provide administrative oversight. Whatever title you want to give them, there's probably gonna have to be additional support staff or support work. Because to, with only two people there, you can't keep loading more on them, right? But I think, when you're looking at taking some of the duties. You now have a solid waste committee. But if they get off the, off to a good start, like stormwater, you know, they could work probably very independently, but still be under the Board of Health, but that would remove some of the burden, alright? The, the reason I mentioned Title V inspections and plans is, is I was telling you how we did it in the past. And yes, we had the services of an engineer, a real engineer, and he was, he made himself available. When the plans came in, um, and got stamped in, he would be notified, Jerry, there's three plans you gotta look at, there's five plans, and he would come by and pick them up. And get them back to us quickly with all the notations, good, bad, or indifferent. Uh, and there was, there was that flow, okay? If we didn't have somebody with his, with Mr. Pillings qualifications, even with a fifty-three G account for an engineer. I don't feel we're gonna have priority for instantaneous problems, the kind of things that he usually goes out on, alright?
Now, if we fifty-three G a Title V, who would coordinate that?
Oh, I wouldn't do a fifty-three G on that. No, what I'm saying is, there would be money budgeted to pay somebody to do Title V inspections, or to do, um. Septic plan reviews. Because if he's not doing it, somebody's gotta do it. If he's doing it, something else he's doing has gotta be taken away, because he doesn't have time.
So wouldn't it be, just basically be a user fee? If you have somebody who is going over the plans, is gonna be built to be. If you have somebody who is going over the plans, it's going to be built to be person.
Whoever owns the property.
Whoever owns the property is going to review, pay. At the same time, when we go back to Joe Pacheco, which I think was doing it when you were around.
Yes.
He brought an income in for the town, and he took care, took care of himself, I don't mean to sound that way, but he. The expense, right, right.
I did these inspections of Title V, sorry, I was out there doing test tools. And, you know, and he got paid monthly as I remember.
Right, you did. Now, the other departments that you speak of, like the highway department. In saying there's a foreman below Tom Ferry, he doesn't have a board that takes care of him. And I don't mean taking care of him, but that he reports to, he reports just through the selectmen. So i- it's different than the Board of Health where you have. Three members and you have a. A head of the board, so i- it's difficult to compare the two. This is definitely a mixture, a mix when it comes to, again, the fire chief. He can have an assistant, no different than the board has a clerk and a member. And, and somebody who by right should be overseeing. You have a Roz. So I guess I'm not sure about why the makeup is, you're able to compare the two.
Because I've served in a capacity, and when we split the boards, because we had. Mr. Pires, who was an experienced Board of Health guy, I mean, I served with him. And we handled everything we had to handle. Mr. Pires was a working Board Health member, because he was experienced. If you don't have that kind of experience, you just can't go in and start doing Board of Health stuff, all right? Y'all, everyone has to learn. But the thing was, as with Mr. Pires leaving. There was no transition, he's gone, find somebody to fill his spot. Person coming in in his spot didn't have his background, didn't have his experience, didn't understand the connection of the Board of Health. When it was the Board of Selectmen, and what I'm saying is when we split them. Oh, that's all going to be fine and well, there'll be this, there'll be. There was a vacuum left that was filled, and now that Tom Pires is not there doing the work. More work ends up back in the office, okay? So.
Because that happened with Matt Tanis and not just Mr. Pires, but when Matt Tanis was on the board, he. Did several things, that leaves, we're back in the, in the same situation. You know, I could. Turn and say to Mr. Pacheco, who has Title V experience, you know. He could be the next Matt Tanis, but. Board members seem to come and go, as we've seen the many people that have been appointed. So I, I think we've gone down that road and learned a very valuable lesson. That the commissioners oversee, but to actually get them, those days are gone. Of expecting them to step up and do the day-to-day operations. It hasn't worked.
No, and remember, the two people, the two people that served with Mr. Pires. Were Board of Health inspectors, both of them, they were experienced inspectors.
Should Todd be on the board?
No, that's not what I'm saying, that would add more to his, if. If Todd lived in town and decided he would. All right, there's a vacancy on the Board of Health. Now the three members, he's coming. He's going to have to do the work, just like we did when we were Selectmen Board of Health. The only reason we were able to keep all the balls in the air when we were that way. Especially because we relied on people we called in, whether it was Joe Pacheco or. Jerry Bernard. We contracted what we needed, okay? Mr. Ferry had a big role in everything to do with landfills. And the highway superintendent before him, so all that stuff was there. And thrown into that mix with solid waste and all that, well. We were, we were hands-on working people in the office doing stuff. When we split the board, okay? As I say, hindsight, you know. I look at this and say, we left a gap, okay? Because we were still relying on Tom Pires, who was retired. He worked part-time, I was fully retired. And I worked in the office and also from home, and I was available. Those days are gone, okay? And you had. Board of Health had two very well-qualified, experienced members. Except they had full-time jobs, which was their health-related work, and Tom had the time. But obviously, as, you know, as time goes on. That goes away. When I equate. Tom Ferry with the operation. I realize he's under the Board of Selectmen, he's under the town administrator. But in all honesty. If you guys disappeared tonight. His department will run. If Mike disappeared tonight, the Martin's carried all the water. Those departments will run because of the structure that's in place. So you better go home tonight, because I don't think you guys will survive. Think about that.
Well, I had said that early on, nothing, I'm sorry, I had said that early on about Todd, we have to plan for, like he's not here. And because not everybody's going to come with the expertise that he has, so. And then I think that's when it was brought up that, well, what responsibilities is he doing that we should? Look at now and determine whether or not he should continue to do those responsibilities. It concerns me that we don't plan enough for the future. That we're left with. A board that. Again, not to say that it doesn't have leadership, because I think there's three strong members now. That will be able to carry on in some capacity. Should there be an assistant? If so, should that person be certified, skilled in some way other than? And nothing gets Roz, don't take this personally, I'm just, again, planning for the future, who comes with more than just. More than a set of skills that somebody.
Administrative skills?
Administrative skills. Roz, I don't mean that as an insult.
I started, I don't want anyone to be offended when I say there is no leadership management I'm talking about, all right? I'm not talking about the overall governance, okay? The three of you are very diverse in your backgrounds and your experience and everything else. Three of you now have somebody to make sure on a day-to-day basis, everything is happening, okay? We have a Board of Health who is in place, who is responsible for the overall operation of things. By the same token, because of all the duties and. Responsibilities assigned under the Board of Health. It's like, there's so much going on and all this. What I'm saying is, yes, I'm selfish, the Stormwater Committee, although it operates under the Board of Health. And because they have voting membership on that committee, knows what's going on. By the same token, I'm protective of who's on that, because if I lose a key person, I'm in big trouble. And I can't just say, give me somebody from this department or, well, let's do this. It is that important because we have to do this together, that's why I'm saying, yes, we need him. Yes, the skills he has as an engineer are very important to the Stormwater Committee. To your analogy. Number one, we couldn't afford to hire an engineer. Okay? Number two, there are services needed, and if, if they could be found out. We could find them out, like this last, first one we've just done, by the same token. When you need instantaneous response, you've got to have somebody to step up, whether it's the call that. Calls, I used to get, Tom, we've got to go to this place, police are there, this is the problem. This bar, the state police raided this place, we've got to go there, because they found a horrible condition. Those kinds of things. A Board of Health can do that. By the same token, when you come to situations that require the technical stuff. Not just jump in the car and go there because the police went and found a nightmare and they want you there. Yes, you go and look at it, you write it up, you determine as a board what we're going to do about this. Whether you relocate people or what. But again, because of the, if you will, the interconnection. In the case of relocating people, that's not stormwater, but you know what, we get key people, we have, would be involved. And that's the point. What I'm saying is, I can't afford to lose, I already said that, you know who my key people are, everyone is key to me, all six members, plus the associates. The rest of our staff that falls under the Board of Health, you're talking about. You now have a solid waste committee, hopefully, they're going to get on their feet, and let's say they're going to operate similar to. Stormwater committee in that, once they understand what it is they have to do.
We're going to have a separate meeting.
They can report back and, and, and keep the Board of Health advised, but they won't need to be. In the office every day and whatever.
We want to.
All that stuff, I mean. Obviously, police department and ACO. That removes that from there. It's just that. Overall, and again. I realize that the structure in the police and fire department, because they're twenty-four seven. Is much more than the highway department. Unless there's a storm or some other disaster going on, then they're twenty-four seven, but what I'm saying is. Look at every department in this town. Look at what they do. There is somebody in place to make sure that whatever has to be done is done. Now, yes, they're under you.
Making him a department head is a topic of discussion, it's not something that we've overlooked. We just haven't gotten that far yet in our discussions. Right now, we're looking at the duties of the Board of Health and who should be doing them. And both from. Expertise. And legal, such as the animal control officer and its relationship with the police department. Or emergency prep and the role of the fire chief and the legislative. Duties and responsibilities of the fire chief. When we, we talk about. Or I think we, when I say we, the three of us recognize the fact. That there is a need for better coordination of services. And whether that becomes a coordinator or he becomes a department head. That's something we'll negotiate, once we figure which responsibilities will remain part of the Board of Health.
I saw that, remember that diagram a couple of meetings ago? I think the one thing that was valuable in that is you can look at it and say. Across the top, there was a whole listing of things, you can look at it and say, okay. Put these down next to the ones that they definitely have to have. What's left? Can any of those be standalone committees of boards, like solid base? ACO? That could go to police. What else is on there that might be able to be, whether you form a committee or appoint a.
It's where we're at now.
Exactly, exactly. And then there were the other things that, whether it's by state or, or CDC or. Whatever, that they absolutely positively must be functions of a local Board of Health. Again, I probably helped became a catch-all because it was the Board of Selectmen Board of Health.
If you can't get ahold of Todd, who would you go to?
It would depend on what the problem was. If the office is open, I'd call Roz and say, where is he? Or if he's away on vacation, Jim or Tom. Simply because the other members of the board would be in the loop, but if I need somebody now. One of those three or two of those three are usually around. And I try, they don't, I hope in the long. If I contact one or two of them. Or they might say, I don't take care of this, I'll take care of it. They might do that. Quite frankly, that season consists, it's the first season consists that was issued. Since I've been on the Stormwater Committee. And when I was on the Board of Health, I remember one or two. That got issued.
Wow, that's it?
Exactly, exactly. But the. All I'm saying to you is, when you're looking at the structure, if there are things you could sign to a committee or another department. Without obviously overburdening that department, you don't want to do that either. And then really zero in on the stuff that is Board of Health. As you've said, and as I heard that, with that gentleman, those people were here talking about. Stormwater structure. I am confident saying that Stormwater Committee can remain under the Board of Health as a subcommittee. Because we function independently, as far as on a day-to-day basis, we're not in there. Obviously, they're in the loop, and they have representation on the board. I think the solid waste committee may end up like that, but of the other functions that are left. After you say, this can go here or this can go there. What you've got left is what has to be looked at, as far as covering it and getting it done. And making sure that, the other thing about having somebody in an administrative position. Even though the administrative person or the manager or whatever you want to form it, whatever you want to call it. Make sure it's done. Obviously, Tom isn't out at the job site, every single job site, what's going on in this town at the same time. But he has a foreman, and then he knows what's going on. And there should be somebody in a similar capacity, whether it's, again, whatever title you want to give, administrator, manager, foreman. That's the sound of your business life, but that's the level of what I'm talking about. Okay, it just shouldn't be left to Roz or Todd or both of them. Simply because when you, Roz is structured because she's a junior. Todd doesn't have structure, and so he's getting pulled in all directions.
Working on a contract to.
Exactly, and what he's trying to do is focus on. What core facilities or duties for him are. So, again, I, I think, as you said. When the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health split, everything was fine.
Yeah, who do you go to Roz if they don't get ahold of Todd?
It all depends on the situation. Ninety percent of the times, it's Jen.
Yeah.
Sometimes we call the other board members, it all depends. If it's conservation, I would call Lisa, like everybody kind of has their own expertise.
You refer to whatever department would be the strongest to answer the questions.
And a lot of times, if I'm not sure, I ask Jen, and send me in the right direction.
Mr. Pacheco? First of all, no disrespect, I agree with you, Peter, that what we need is not what the fire department, police department need. They have dispatchers, they have people out of the road all the time, highway department is snowstorms, they do also. And we do need structure, but we don't need a dispatcher. Emergency that we might have is not like head-on collision, where we have to have firemen on the scene all the time. Ready to hop in the ambulance or fire, anything like that. It does need some structure, and so no disrespect, but there's supposed to be a discussion of everything. And you just told us the same thing several times, over and over.
You don't understand what I'm talking about as it relates to management.
I do understand.
No, because what you just said is, be focused on a department. I am certainly not equating the Board of Health with the fire department or the police department or the highway department.
Well, that's what Peter said, that. Well, that's what Peter said, that he didn't agree that it was the same thing. And you said it was.
About management structure, administrative structure.
Right.
That's what I'm talking about.
Exactly. Which doesn't even compare to the fire department, police department.
And that's exactly, I'm not comparing it. I'm not, like, you know, I'm not offended. I do have a master's in management. I studied it for twenty-two months already. All I'm saying is, when you look at hierarchy, structure of business, of town, pick it, pick whatever it is, and look at the way something is structured, okay? I could say, look at the way the school department is structured. You know, the board of health is like a school, uh, department, but anyone that understands the structure of the school department understands the level that you have. And obviously, their end product, whose education is different. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, I'm just saying that we don't need to get into, we don't need a town manager for this department. There are two people right now.
I didn't say that.
The fire department has many people, police department has many people, and so does the county department. And they have many people that can run the department when they're not there. We don't, I agree. Those need some structure. But I think it needs everybody's input, instead of talking about the same thing over and over about continuing to repeat.
Thank you. Mr. Pillings, what is the current breakdown of time dedicated to stormwater-related reviews and responsibilities?
Um, we've only been tracking now for a while, I guess, something like that. I didn't print it out, but it's something like fifteen percent of our time, twenty percent, somewhere in that range.
Follow up on that, that question. Uh, so Mrs. Goel, you, you, you're the one that filed the MS four report every year. I didn't see for year four, but I suspected that the town, I, excuse me, the state doesn't post it right away, so I, I, it's not posted on the.
The MS four this year online?
Not until the state accepts it.
It's been accepted, just like the inner line.
Or the EPA, sorry.
Yeah, actually, it's EPA, yeah, okay.
But nobody's supposed to.
Oh, they haven't put any on, okay.
So along the same line, uh, for the previous year, year three, so what I could see, uh, there were thirty-two site plan reviews, thirty-five inspections and five enforcements. Now, to stormwater, do any of that is that all Mr. Pillings steps doing?
It's a combination. As a matter of fact, one of the things we're going to talk about, um, at the meeting Wednesday, one of the things that Newt and Chad, who's the senior permit writer for the EPA, who is eye contact at EPA, has always drummed into our heads, when I say everyone that files MS four, take credit for everything you do. So when we were putting issues together, uh, it was clear to Tom and I, because Tom and I do the most of the MS four together. Uh, Tom, uh, Perry, we really don't take credit for all we do. So at the meeting, one of the agenda items is, we are going to have a log that Mrs. Gracie is going to maintain. So whenever you're out there, any member of the committee, if you stop at a site, tell her you went to the site, the date and the time you were there. If you just drive by, that's not a site visit. But if you get a call, can you come up and take a look at this basin, whatever? When we go out as a group, it's one call. If Mr. Pillings goes out, and Mr. Agia goes out, and it's stormwater related, tell her, because I think we're under reporting. I think there are a lot more site visits done than we are actually reporting. So we are putting in place a way to track, uh, whether there's site visits or, um, obviously, he can tell us how many type of vibes he's done or plans he's looked at, but, um, I think a lot was being done by the committee and, um, this way we'll have a log.
Uh, you can ask on my behalf.
The next question that I have is, Mr. Pillings, what is the timeframe that you need to perform a, a stormwater review of a plan? Either an hour is a percentage of your.
Yeah, well, it depends what it is. So like, for example, uh, one acre lot comes in, they disturbed an acre. Uh, it could take just a couple hours, um, but if we get like a hundred lot subdivision, it could take days. That also involves writing a letter, maybe having a meeting with the engineer. Uh, obviously, we discussed it at a stormwater meeting, which I'm not including in that time. But I may have to go up to the site and look at it, may have to talk to the highway department about a catch basin in the street or whatever, like, go talk to the planning board about the conditions of their approval, so this, some of this is going to be resolved with our PACT meetings that we're having, when we get everybody at the table and we can work some of that out, but it's, everyone is different.
I was curious, how long did it take for you to do the review of, of Dora Estates?
All of them or just anyone in particular? Well, I did four review letters.
Well, how long did it take you to do?
Well, the first one took longer than the last one because they got better as they went along, but, um, but the first one between the review and then writing the whole letter, being in Tonton, um, it was probably something to the tune of like fifteen or sixteen hours.
You know, sixteen hours. So we put a dollar amount on that, it was a significant expense to the town of Dayton, correct?
Well, it would have been significant if they had hired enough by consultant to do the review.
I understand, but time is money.
It is.
And the time you spend on that is not a criticism, has a dollar value that took you away from other things that you could do. So the question one might ask in management is, are there other ways to handle those type of situations in the future? Whether we have a consulting engineer that maybe doesn't work just for stormwater, but has stuff for the planning board, has stuff for conservation, has stuff for stormwater when the, the need arises. Can we create some way that the town gets compensated when things like Dora Estates comes up? You know, those are questions.
Dora, obviously, because it was in Tonton, it was a horse of a different color for how to make that whole thing work. The Conservation Commission in Tonton had no legal authority to vote the Dyson Stormwater Committee to do the reviews like that, isn't a thing. But in-town reviews, yes, we, it does vote fifty-three G, two of them, Conservation and Planning Board would have their own reviewer.
So on that, like, we have the planning board, like, in, um, they do their own coordinated reviews. Like, and they're like looking for, like, and quiet, and they're looking for all of the caps and everything else.
And fine tooth comb, yeah.
So then, so then they go through the respective processes. But hypothetically, if it's a subdivision, because it involves the seven to more and thirty-five thousand square feet, then it definitely comes to the, so, uh, much as from what, uh, to the stormwater committee, you do at that point, once it comes to the committee, you do an additional review?
Well, usually trying to do it sooner on, because again, I'm doing like bird's eye perspective and, and I'm gonna analogy this, like with Mike Maule. He looks at the budget each year, but he's not looking at, well, how much do you have in office supplies going on in the assessors or whatever? He's looking at like the overview to try and see how it all fits together. He's not necessarily concerned, you know, with some of the individual things in there, but that's pretty much what I'm doing. I'm looking at where is the water going, um, the drainage system, the street adequate, uh, concern with neighbors, uh, is the drainage system, they're proposing something that we want to see from a stormwater perspective, that kind of stuff. It's a different review now than I was doing. Dora states is not what I normally.
Yeah, no, that wasn't normally, but once, so once, uh, so once a green seal, once Green Seal can, can provide our comments, uh, yeah, uh, two of projects that was initiated by planning board in Hong Kong, do you, um, uh, yeah, yeah, then do an additional review on that same project on behalf of stormwater?
I don't want to call it additional review, but it's, it, it it is a review that goes with them, like, I would take their reviews and look at them. I like to do it at the same time, what happened with a bunch of projects is they went and got their planning board permit in twenty eighteen, and conservation in twenty nineteen, and then didn't think they needed stormwater, so they never came to the stormwater committee until twenty twenty. It's really hard at that point in time when they already have approvals to kind of, you're jumping in after the fact, so then I have to do something more. But if I'm jumping in a ground level, I don't have to do as much, because then I can direct, these review consultants, hey, look more into this or look into that, and then they're taking care of the analysis. So it's more of directing, I guess, than it is reviewing at that point, but see, it's gotten much better since we've got the, the two other review consultants and they are being told to review the stormwater compliance.
Can I ask a stormwater question?
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. Pillings, how much percentage of your time is spent with the deal of stormwater?
Uh, I just said about fifteen or twenty percent.
Fifteen or twenty?
Depending on all, that's over, what did I say, August, September, October, over like a three-month span, it's been about twenty percent. That's the office too, it's similar for.
And how much is spent percentage-wise on Title V?
For taking away from you guys.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
And how, what percentage is spent on Title V?
I've got it all downstairs, if you want to go print it out and bring it up.
Next meeting?
Yeah, the next meeting, it's like to bring it out.
Okay. Scaring, okay.
Compared to, oh yes, absolutely, we can wait till the next meeting. Compared to other towns, though, what is their review process? Nancy.
For, for stormwater?
Yes.
Uh, she's laughing because most towns don't do the stormwater that we do, where a bank can have a stormwater committee. The board of health in Berkeley is in charge of stormwater. They don't do anything at all.
They don't.
At, at all.
They rely on.
But they don't rely on.
Just don't.
Just don't do anything.
Just don't do.
The regulations, it's their responsibility, but they don't do anything about it. You go into a lot of towns, it's under the DPW or an engineering department. Those are cities that are bigger, they have an engineering department.
Right.
That is different. For most of the towns, it's, um, kind of just a box you try and check off, whether hiring outside consultant to do the MS four report at the end of the year, but the day-to-day stuff, they don't get involved.
And what is that can do?
You say why?
Why?
Well, it's under our bylaws.
Yeah.
Um, that we want to be in control of this stuff, and honestly, I'd like to think that we're making a difference as a stormwater committee, that the projects coming out now are, are better protecting the town than.
I think so.
Came out before.
Right.
Excuse me. The MMA meeting that I attended, it talked about Dyson Stormwater. We're not quote-unquote unique. We're good. And we have the respect of many communities because of the work that the Dyson Stormwater does. And to me, that is important. You know, it isn't just checking boxes and doing the bare minimum. We're protecting the best interests of the community, and that's truly commendable.
Uh, yeah, I'm not insinuating that we shouldn't have one.
Well, no, no, I, I understand, but I, I, I get a little nervous about thoughts of cutting corners sometimes to save money, you know? You can be penny wise and pound foolish, and that's something I caution us about.
You ask questions about his workload and how much he spends doing this, uh, stormwater work. And he talks about the Title V's and, and the projects that we have ongoing right now. However, we've all been involved with site visits, the existing housing developments that have problems because of stormwater. We've got, uh, a project that, um, somebody wants to, or I guess, is going to buy and finish. Very nice homes, everything else, but we've been down there to look at drainage basins that aren't being maintained, they're growing up with. All right?
Absolutely.
Grow up into whatever, they don't function, uh, which creates more grief. Um, the, uh, overall, I, I guess, the overall effect of stormwater is not really understood, I, and this is not you, is not understood in general by the public. Okay, I hear it all the time. Heard it last week when I was giving out all that good stuff. One man who's new to Dyson, I bought a house in Dyson, and he was, he was really interested and had all these questions. Uh, why are you doing this and what does it cost and all this other stuff? And, um, it, not every, everyone is that interested, it's just another expense. Unless you live in one of those developments that all of a sudden the basins aren't working, you've got water in the solar, you've got, and then that comes back to the board of health and, or it's my neighbor's water is coming over here. Uh, so we get those kind of complaints too. Uh, some of what we have done lately is trying to correct stuff that wasn't done correctly. Uh, way back when, things that weren't enforced. It is what it is. If they come in with a complaint of, or there's water backed up and I'm going to have mosquitoes, you know, um, we go out.
Doesn't matter where the mistake was or how long ago it was.
No, it's, it's a problem, you gotta look into it.
Right.
Do what you can.
Regarding this question is two part, one I'm going to ask the board of health and then I'll ask Mr. Pillings in particular. Since he's the one that usually spends most of the time with stormwater issues. Board of Health, what would you like to see Todd's role or the board of health's role in regards to stormwater?
Like, by the bylaws that it falls under us and we don't really have, and it sounds like that's where it should belong, I mean, it's important, Nancy's laid out its importantness, um, we just need to figure out a way that we can do that and other things and not continue to put off whatever's getting put off when these things come. I mean, summarizing what Nancy said, it's unpredictable work, it's not all the time, but when it comes, it needs immediate attention. So how are we gonna make sure that Todd can take that immediate attention and not let other things fall by the wayside? Do you have something to add?
No, I agree with you that, uh, we don't want to take too much time, Todd, we're from the board of health. I also agree that, well, I know highway department has the, the basins dug out every year. And if it takes that long for a particular basin to grow weeds out of it, it's not an emergency. It's probably taking ten years to happen. If it took ten years to literally get the weeds to come out, that doesn't cost an emergency. So you can set time, you probably send the highway department down, ask them why he said like that. Can you give me a reason why a head patient would be neglected for ten years?
Talking about hatch basins.
What, does that be said, Todd?
First of all, when I said that we had a housing development, we went into the site inspection and the basins are growing up with whatever, talking what was supposed to be infiltration basins. When that bylaw was written, when those regs were written, we were, and still do, push infiltration. We don't want detention, don't want retention bases. That means water is going to stay. Eventually, one of those will drain, the other one will hold water, okay? Back in the day, before I was on the, uh, board selecting board of health, there was a, there was a rule. All basins had to be underground. Well, then it dawned on, how do you know what's being dumped into those basins? Okay, therefore, we went with infiltration basins. So the water goes into the ground as close to where it falls as possible. Infiltration basins, detention basins, retention base. Those basins have to be maintained by the developer, the homeowners association. You're talking street basins. I'm not talking those. I'm talking those nightmares like we have at Brook Street. Uh, a huge basins that capture water and if they're constructed properly, they will drain and get the water into the ground. You're talking about drainage systems, the street drainage, all that. No, no, um, but along those lines, Mr. Perry is contracting out the basins leaky now because the EPA said, the stuff you take out of that basin.
You own it.
Acidous waste and. Acidous waste and there are special controls on how you just deal with it. It's expensive and we're gonna track it and we're gonna report it on the MS four. So Tom says, you know what? We're gonna contract out the basin cleaning. They come and clean it, they take all that gunk out of it and they dispose of it and we just show we had it contracted. So that's the difference between the basins you're talking about, they don't grow up with weeds and trees. But I'm talking about on a psych visit.
But the water does come from them.
Excuse me?
The water does come from them. Where does the water come from that goes into those places that you're talking about?
It's a drainage, part of the drainage system on the property. It's part of the plans that show how, when they were built.
No, from the pavement into the catch basin and then.
It's not on personal property. I've never seen anybody have a driveway with a catch basin.
This is commercial and subdivision.
These are not.
They're running straight.
Close street.
Street or parking lots from commercial. Yeah, it's not an individual house that were, that have drainage.
No, we, no, I'm talking, you know the basins I'm talking about.
I know, when you say, sometimes when you say houses developments.
Yeah.
We're taking.
But these bases must be maintained. So what we were doing inspection, uh because the basins we saw, uh were not being maintained. And uh that work is gonna have to be done. And the main thing is we don't want this coming back to the town of Dyson as an expense to the town. So when the plans are developed, hopefully they design the uh basins so that they will maybe they're just sloping grass, gentle slope and it goes in, dissipates. Others, uh there's a different uh ratio on the slope. Uh, again, some are detention, but and some are retention. We really don't want those. We really want infiltration. So that we don't have that. But um in the overall scheme of things for the board of health, excuse me, yeah, the board of health. You got to keep in mind, the money that is budgeted for the overall operation of the board of health does not reflect a cost to operate the board of health. It doesn't reflect the cost for the stormwater program. Our budget is minimal and it's based on, other than the things like office supplies and those kind of things we need. It's based on the amount of time that Tom has figured out, uh because his, his crew does maintenance work when it's needed. Um, and a portion of the money that's paid to him in that. Um.
That comes from stormwater?
Uh, yeah, yeah, there's money budgeted. Um, and there were expenses related to the stormwater program that have never been built, okay? I'm telling you guys, I'm getting old. You have got to think about instructuring the board of health. Structure for and probably money for when I'm no longer doing this, who's gonna take it over? You need to think about that. So I don't see anybody coming forward and say, I'm gonna do that, all right? I'm doing it because I was involved from day one. But by the same token, we're going to have a stormwater committee down the road. You're gonna have to have somebody that will take over the leadership of it, that knows stormwater and you're probably gonna have to pay a stipend. All right, so long, you're talking long term, long term planning. So you need to think about that.
Um, with that being said, we have asked the board of health what they thought was a issue that needed addressing. Mr. Pilling. You are the one who spends most of your workflow hours dealing with multiple issues, including stormwater, although Ms. Grass tells you some. I actually could probably ask this question of both of you. Rosalyn, how many hours are your percentage of your time spent on stormwater?
They're both about the same.
About the same?
Yeah, I'm doing more of the behind the scene stuff and he's doing the planner, he's an up in the field. So I have to take the phone call. Um.
Agendas?
Oh, yeah, agendas, may not be quite a bit because they're three hour meetings. So like Karen's tied up a lot of minutes. There's a lot, it's strapped in the permits and um complaints. We get calls every day. People are, you know, stormwater is a big thing. We have global warming, there's a lot more rain. We were in a drought and then all of a sudden you get a, so a lot of complaints and just try and um, you know, help the people as much as I can until it can get to Todd or Nancy or Jim or whoever it needs to get to. Give as much background information as I can that we're here to help. Your neighbor cannot just dump all of their um runoff onto your property. It it just, we will help you, we will be there, don't. It does happen legally at least.
And what do you see other challenges for you in regards to stormwater? Is it time? Is it dealing with the public complaints or?
Uh, honestly, it's probably the minutes. There's a lot that goes on in those, those meetings. There's a lot of technical things that it, the, and the interruptions in the office are constant. So if you're get off subject to try and get back to it, you've got to read the paragraph you just wrote to get back to where you were. And by then phones ring in or someone has a question at the counter. There's just, it's constant interruption. So it does make it a little challenging.
Well, like, I think the twenty percent figure is a little far. So honestly, from what you guys are telling me, that stormwater is taking up a lot more than twenty percent of the time, which has impacted the board of health.
Well, some weeks that can be true. If it's a week we have a meeting, there's a lot going on, so.
But you're saying you have more phone calls constantly.
For everything, though. It's not just stormwater complaints, it's cuts and complaints, it's wellness checks.
And and part of the issues for our tracking. Sometimes you don't do it instantaneously and we, did you spend twenty minutes? Did you spend forty minutes talking to the person? You're trying.
Right.
At the end of the day. So, yeah, we could be off, but say we're trying to track everything, not just stormwater. So it's getting.
It's at least a quarter of what we do, at least. Maybe it's hard, but it's somewhere between.
You gotta say twenty percent, I'm saying twenty-five to a third.
Again, depending on the week, yes.
I I want to pick on Barbara because she's not here. Um, and I would tell her, if she was here, what is her role with stormwater? What does she do the?
She is the board of health representative on the stormwater committee.
Okay, but she, would she take phone calls if she was there?
At the office?
Yeah.
She usually doesn't answer the phone because usually when she's there, um, Mrs. Grassley's there, so.
Yes, but if there's a complaint, is it, does it get directed to her at all or? Okay.
Go to New York Gym first to be there, or Mr. Perry, depending on what it is.
Okay.
And then we brought to the stormwater committee and then the committee might do a sidewalk, but it doesn't just go, here, you go take a look at it. So the board members choose the staff first.
Okay, alright. And again, I would have asked her if she was here. And to comment on that, just like you have, Mr. Mullen, you guys uh sitting at the office all day long to answer any questions, they go through the small, the same type of structure could happen there. None of those board members really have, have been there all the time. We don't have scheduled hours to be there. We're free to do whatever we want. So that's an option if somebody comes in, I guess.
Yeah, we always have work for board health members if they come in, they want to hang out with us, we could always do more. Yeah, Nicole's already been doing more and more, obviously Barbara's an issue.
Yes.
That's one of the problems. You can't rely on members of the board to operate the department. One of the problems. And I was critical of the separation years ago when certain wings were being thrown around because I felt that it was gonna create a product that was not sustainable. And here we are, how many years later, talking about the same problems, haven't been fixed.
Right.
How are we gonna fix them though? That's.
That's what we're gonna talk about.
As far on, the problem was management. There is zero management in the board of health. And without management, for the department that does that much workload, chaos is.
I have a question. I feel like.
Establishing.
I feel like they're on the same level. Who's the, where's the, you need a hierarchy, I think, but it.
Exactly. There's no departments.
Right, yeah. I know, but we're not there to the day to day. Yes, we need somebody.
That's why I'm saying, you're not the board of select, but let's say you're up there now, this is a board of health meeting and three of you are sitting there and there are issues coming up. We got two people here and maybe Jim or maybe I'm here, but there's no one really that is like Mike.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not saying you need a administrator. What I'm saying is there is a level of management that, or administration, pick the title that is not there, you know? And and the other thing too is now Mr. Aggie is another person that's out on the road a lot, or he gets the calls, we got this, we got that. Um, he's basically at the end of a phone line, as is Tom Ferry, as is Todd, okay? But just like the board of health, okay, when technically, although we're employees of the town of Dyson. Um, we don't, we're not obligated to the hours. They've got to handle all of that stuff, plus they got a full time job or whatever. And because Mr. Aggie is at the end of the phone line and so is he and so is Tom. Um, that's a plus, plus, plus. But when you're thinking about a board that has so many responsibilities, that's why I'm saying, if you can pull up the ones that a a committee can do, that still reports to them, but that they don't have to do, okay? They know what's happening with stormwater, but they don't have to be there on a day to day basis. Because if they hear something, they say, hey, what's happening down on Pickens Street, okay? Somebody's gonna be able to tell them, right? But if they, they're, they have other responsibilities outside of the town, just like you do, you know? And that's why I'm saying this, a vacuum was created and because Mr. Pies was here. He kind of filled the vacuum, he's gone.
And we know, we know why it happened. And and it happened, Dyson was a smaller community and money was tight. Just like we couldn't hire someone to take over all the mandates and responsibilities of solid waste. So a solid waste committee was put together of volunteers and saved the town a lot of money. Because we're talking sixty, seventy thousand dollar job to start. And we saved all that money by having volunteers do it. But the town is growing and the responsibilities and the mandates are making, putting, it would be unfair to ask volunteers, people that sit on the committee getting a small stipend to take on roles where it becomes twenty-five, thirty hours a week of work to do. And we saw what happened with a couple of members that beside Mr. Pies, who came on as commissioners. And they were doing things on the side to help the board of health, to help the town of Dyson. And they were doing it to save the town money. It it is somewhat counterproductive and it certainly is not good management or Deming type quality management. Mr. Mullen, you had.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything that's been uh said, but I, uh, but I also so, but I also would think there's like in addition to really have like a management issue we have to deal with. I think, Lenny, like as you mentioned, one of the issues we need to reconcile as well, like is, uh, do we have oh, like really reconciling between Todd Pilling the health agent, uh, and Todd Pilling the engineer? Again, how do we make that reconcile because we're uh, uh, the roles and responsibilities on the chapter one eleven are pretty broad as we know based on the board of health. Uh, but like, oh, you know, but all the uh roles and responsibilities that are under chapter one eleven. We, so like it's impractical and impossible to create a committee for. Uh, that's why we have a health agent in the first place. So we have to oh, you know, like, oh, you know, while actually have, so like while actually, while actually having like stormwater in the complement. Uh, like I think we really need to find a balance about oh, you know, how we're gonna deal with those challenges, but also deal with the title five and the septic reviews. Uh, like how we're gonna deal with housing and I think it's a balance. I think something uh, at the end of the day, just say hypothetically that we want oh, oh, that we want Todd to focus on stormwater reviews, maybe uh, like maybe we go back to something else, title five and septic reviews, you know, to free up that space. Oh, yeah, like maybe that's how we oh, you know, like actually like think about this and it's like as a health agent, Todd will, oh, like just like I'm involved in a whole. Oh, yeah, just like I'm responsible for a whole bunch of things, but I don't have really to be involved in every uh, in every single one of those things in order to really uh oh, you, oh, yeah, to get the job done and be productive. I think we need to find a balance and a complement of what uh, yeah, the current functions are being handled. So we have them like all being handled in a kind of way, and I don't think we have the ability to do that anymore. We have to find that balance.
Well, it's fortunate that stormwater runs very efficiently.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, it's not, that can't be said for every department that the board of health oversees. Uh, so, uh, thank you to you, Nancy, but uh, we have to look at that as as a whole, i- i- and maybe don't oh, sorry, that was my chat. Oh, um, the stormwater does branch off or or um does the board of health become a five member? Um, or not that I want to spend the money, um, so that.
Can you get three members, right?
We can get three members, right. Um, and and just thinking out loud.
Can I make a comment? I agree with the small, that we need all that structure. Thing I don't agree with is we've got two hundred and fifteen million dollars that's gonna be divided up amongst all the towns, cities to a state, that's what states say. If we take, say, the animal patrol officer and take that away from the health department and push it on the police department, now it goes on their budget. They're not gonna get any money that's gonna come from the state. If we're gonna justify having, say, a manager or department, why shift everything off onto departments that aren't getting money? So we're gonna shift all these responsibilities off, but you hire somebody to take care of just a little bit. We're gonna hire somebody to do that, so we might as well have them do all of it.
So I don't know, you look, I, so can I get what you're saying, Mr.? So like I get, so I get what you're saying, but I also think especially in terms of, so especially in terms of the ACO and emergency. And it's really, we did, uh, uh, how we, we restructured it in a way that frankly, like it always really should have been like that. So, so, yeah, there was no value, I guess, in quoting him when really to that possibility, but it oh, like it shouldn't really have been in there.
Who, who pays for the, what? Who pays for the office? Who's budget?
Who pays for the ECO? Uh, it's under its own budget.
Okay.
Uh, the envelope of who pulls the budget is its own.
Okay.
That helps.
Yes. I wrap this, sir, an ideal was coming in the board of health budget or the police department.
I couldn't tell the FY twenty-three budget, uh, had a bit, there was about thirty four hundredish dollars that came out of the board of health budget. Uh, I for the animal inspection and then the remainder of uh the FY twenty-two uh, funding came out of the dedicated ECO budget. The FY twenty-three budget merged them both together.
So nothing comes out of the police department budget?
No, the ECO was its own budget.
But we took, we took, we took everything and pushed it on the police department. But it was still coming out of the budget.
The police chief's our department head now, right?
Yeah, yes, but the, but the ECO has its own budget.
Alright, so won't be coming out of our budget anymore?
No.
I I want to, uh, I know we painted a really rosy picture about stormwater here tonight and I agree with all of that. However, I think for the record, it should be disclosed that there are some things that we're still not doing, stormwater related. Um, stormwater inventory basis, uh, which is a list that we're supposed to compile of all of the storm infrastructure, they're not sub divisions. That's fell by the wayside, just because none of us have the time to do it. Um, it's important because it goes hand in hand with our recording.
Um, it's important because it goes hand in hand with our recording.
What department would handle, I mean, the actual person that could do it, I mean, obviously.
Considering stormwater is under the offices of what a help, it's really a what a help responsibility, now that we try to share collectively as a stormwater committee. Um, I made the list, panicked, and now we have to physically get someone to go out there and capture all the inventory. Um, there's also some maintenance, um, requirements that. We are trying to stay on top of, but it's very difficult, that's the most strict thing. So if we're talking about stormwater and you want a real picture about what stormwater is, there's some things that are not being done, that should be done.
I, I remember being, uh, Ronald Frost remembers this, uh. Being on the Z B A and going out to Dayton Woods.
Right, exactly.
And why would a Z B A member have to do that? Well, it was for financial reasons, um. Just because he wanted the funds signed off on, but, um. That a prime example of what's not getting done. And talking about trees coming out of, uh, a pond.
We, we are a well-oiled machine, we work well together, we try, but I'll be frank, in some weeks I can't, I can't do it.
Right.
Oh, so there are some things that we're not. We worked with, um, Plankwood, this is Easter Day.
Yes.
Out of that inventory.
Right.
Because obviously there are housing developments that were built on the floor, stormwater committee was formed.
Right.
Let's try to have an accurate inventory. Um, she was doing some research, but again, it's a time issue, I mean, that's in addition to her regular job. Uh, I've got sitting in my living room in a box, two big fat notebooks. Obviously, they aren't complete, and one is the I D D E, which is the illicit discharge. Um, detection and elimination thing that we're required to do. Yeah, I took the training, yes, it's got stuff in it, is it right up to date and everything's done? And then the other one is the stormwater management plan, okay, so.
And and to expect a volunteer, you know, at some point when you retire, to expect a volunteer to step up and do that?
Well, I took the training, some shoes can't be built.
Right, so what do you do, so how, what do you?
Ken's raising his hand over there.
When I report on the M S four, obviously in the notice of intent, it refers to the I D D E. And the, uh, stormwater pro, uh, management plan, um. And honestly, I say, put a couple of pages in, one of the last things I did, now I took the training. Years ago, I don't know, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, so I know what goes into it. And there was a gr- a regional group that we had the training with, uh, in Middleborough. With the same engineering firm that did our, uh. Mon- municipal vulnerability program, um. Uh, plus an ode to him, but the thing is, I mean, we did site visits, we looked at, uh, where the, it was discharging into the, the Masquet River. And they pointed out stuff we had to do, but I'm retired, and even retired, I don't have time to keep all of this stuff up. But the last thing that I added to the book, uh, was. You have to have an inventory of all property owned by the town of Dayton, real estate, buildings, whatever. Vehicles, and it was like guaranteed to get that, and finally. And Swat's called the insurance company, got it for me, since that Karen has kept up with when I say I need the latest inventory. So that we have that, but the other thing that's in there is for all, uh, town, uh, vehicles. How do you service them, if you service them in-house, what do you do with the stuff? So fortunately, the stuff that happens at the highway department, the waste, oil and whatever, they burn it as fuel. So that's acceptable, but I had to have a statement showing that, um, the, uh. We talk about, uh, runoff on town property, where does that go, we want a whole description of that. I went to Tom and said, it goes into the ground, right? That's the matter is. And I ta- and I honestly tell them, no, it's not done completely, we tried to add a little bit each time. And we tried to keep what we've got up to date, but the, the kind of detail. I can't, if somebody hires somebody to hold, to a whole program, my guess is they gotta be an engineer. And the amount of money and the time that goes into it, they probably get staff, and it's like, give me a break. Uh, but as I say, uh, so far, uh, whatever this is, um. E P A's happy with what we're doing, uh, but, yeah, every time I walk by those books and I got them right, I keep physical. Cause it's a reminder, check with Karen, check with Karen, check with whoever to get the latest information. So a lot of the stuff that we talk about, that the committee deals with on a day-to-day basis. As Jim says, yeah, the stuff that's falling, it hasn't completely fallen through the crack, but it's kind of over the, the ice that's not cracked.
Was weird.
Best we can.
I have one more question, and it's directed at Mr. Pillen. Mr. Pillen, if you were up here and you were reorganizing your position. What would you like to see in regards to stormwater? Be included and maybe not included?
Well, I, we'll set aside the fact that it's in the bylaws right now, that it's under the board of health. As an engineer from the outside looking at it, stormwater should not be. It doesn't belong there, um, it's just, it's, I, I just don't think it belongs there. However, given my abilities here in Dayton, that's why it seems to fit at the moment. Again, the stormwater committee is, is a great environment, whether it was under the board of health or D P W or anywhere else, stormwater committee would still exist, still perform the same. But one, and what was left off is these reports that we have to do, it's not just the reporting in the N V about how many tons of sand you pulled out. Or that kind of stuff, salt used when you rode. You also have to understand the operating procedures on how you wash your vehicles, what do you do with your grasp of things, and, you know, what do you, you know. What are you doing to improve your parking lots and. It's supposed to be a master plan so that anybody walking in knows how to do things right. We don't have these procedures in place, and we haven't written them yet, because we just don't have time to write them. Um, and then once you do write them, you have to make sure people get trained in how to do them, you have to have the public education component of it, which right now Mrs. Goulart is going to every meeting, every. Whatever function that we have in town, event, and she's handing out paraphernalia and talking to anybody that'll talk to her about stormwater. Um, and she's educated a lot of people, but is it all eight thousand inhabitants of the town? No. We need to get programs running at the schools and how to educate kids on stormwater. It's all part of our job, uh, under the stormwater regulations now. We're doing this, most towns are doing this, but we still got a long way to go. We don't have the bodies to put it together, to put together these programs and stuff. You know, it takes time to put it together, obviously, you gotta work with teachers and superintendents and all that, so there's that huge portion of it. But, um, like I said, I, I don't believe stormwater belongs in the board of health, but under the current setup that we have. It, it worked fine, but it is a lot of hours on the office, and that is only just for us to keep up as a stormwater agent and running a stormwater committee. That's not getting ahead on all these standard operating procedures, filling in the I D D E and the S W P D D and the M S four, cause the M S four. Uh, I don't know if you've ever read any of it, but there's like, say, a hundred questions in there, but each year you're supposed to reach milestone and do a certain thing. We were supposed to have updated our regulations and bylaws two years ago. We haven't had a workshop to discuss those yet because everybody's been too busy to schedule a date.
Or some disaster.
Or a disaster, uh, like COVID, uh, we did have Autobahn Society come in and evaluate our old ranks and gave us a whole packet of what we should do. We just haven't had an opportunity, so. It's a lot of work, given, like she said, um, Mrs. Goulart said, we are, um, E P A is not coming down on us, we're further ahead than most people. But we have a long, long, long way to go, and. The current setup right now is that somebody does a subdivision today, yes, we review it, permit it, and then build it. But over the next hundred years, every year, they have to send in an inspection report, or the D P W is supposed to go out and look at the drainage basin. And somebody's supposed to solicit, it's just gonna keep getting longer and longer, it's not gonna get short, like, oh, it's done, so check it off and move it off, the, the inspection list gets longer and longer. This leads to more office time for tracking all this, we talked earlier about tracking all of our time and who's doing inspections, so you know how many hours we're putting in. So we can appropriate the right amount of money for stormwater. Cause right now, there's no money in Mr. Aguiar's budget for stormwater, there's no money in the board of health budget for stormwater, or in the assessment budget, you know. So all these people are spending time on stormwater, it's not being budgeted into stormwater, um. So it's only gonna get worse, and it's more and more cracking of our time, more and more of that, so that's why, I mean, we said, you know, clerical was helpful also, but, um. And that's that, but. Say, I like stormwater because I'm an engineer, stormwater is what I do, just like soils and septics, that's, that's, that's why I was hired, it's for those reasons, so. I prefer to keep that stuff in hand than give it all away. But that's just me, if you, but you're not talking about me, you're talking about what, what do you want the board of health doing, and what role do you want the help playing? Now, I understand the Public Health Excellence Grant is kicking around out there, which is a different one, Mr. Chico, um, alluded to earlier. That one should be, is supposed to be possibly getting some help to do some of these inspections that I can't get to. That extra two hundred million, we don't know how much we're gonna get, but that can help too. But I think that's gonna mean more towards regionalization, where you have a regional inspector and that kind of, but we still haven't seen it yet, they just alluded to the fact it's coming, that's. But at least the year.
I wanna correct one thing.
Okay.
Our schools are on board and have been on board from day one, that was the first place I went, when I found out why we got fined. Because, um. In other words, was the secretary, the executive secretary of the board, so I can go to help. And when I finally found out about the reports, no time, no staff, no money. Uh, he said to me, yeah, they told Paul DeMora, who was the highway superintendent, you better develop an educational program for the schools. I said, well, you might as well tell me, go pave Main Street, I can do an educational program.
Yeah.
So I did meet with the, uh, uh, Mrs. Rose, who was earth history. Uh, he was the coordinator for science in the entire system. And when I filed the, uh, first M S four after the fine. I submitted literally pounds, I had the whole curriculum, and I checked with her periodically to find out. Have you updated the curriculum and are the kids getting a classroom, she said, yes. I've had kids come up to me when I'm giving away good stuff, and they say, oh, yeah, we know all about this, we talked about this in science. Okay, so, um, unless they've done a complete curriculum change in science. It is, there's a section in there, um, and that curriculum was filed the first time I sent to report to show them what Dayton had done. Quickly since the fine, okay, so, um. I don't want, I don't wanna put any, uh, onus on the school department, um, but, they were very.
So I may have confused it with solid waste because we have to do recycling component at the schools and get that going, we don't have that going, so I may. Ex- together, they all kind of blur together, so it's also, also both S W C makes a difference.
As you.
I, uh, if that answers the question.
I, I, I think so, I mean, I was gonna ask the same thing, what you thought, um, so what, what is your answer today? Do you think, i- is it an assistant?
Well, um. It just, it comes down to more hours to be thrown at stuff.
I mean, stormwater is not gonna go away.
No, it's not.
And, and.
This idea, like Mr. Aguiar said, we have this inventory that we have to do of all our subdivisions, well, it's a matter of finding time. But then somebody has to enter it all into a database and track every time we do an inspection and put three reports in there, and if there was one we didn't get, they have to call that developer and say, hey, you didn't send it in. It's just time.
Is it something that can be?
And I don't need that phone call, so that's why I, we've been asking for clerical help, so that somebody can do that, so Ross can make the calls and the clerical girl could. Sorry, person.
Sure.
Um, you know, some, the clerical.
So one other thing, like, uh, the D E and the inventory, we did just September apply for a grant with Berkeley to achieve that goal. Um, are we, I thought we'd hear, uh, by now, uh, so.
They said we were gonna hear about like the middle of October or something.
Yeah, so the fact that we haven't, uh, it's not a good sign, uh, but, uh, one of the things, I mean, I think. Oh, you know, like that's a huge priority that we do have really to achieve. Uh, and I think over the next month or so, like looking, uh, we basically have the application, so we basically have the application. Basically, I'd like to stop in the application of it, and so, yeah, maybe applying to use upper funding to really achieve that goal. Uh, it could be something, I mean, like it's sustainable, it's a one-time grant, it could.
Right.
And, yeah, like applying for that funding to the county, like against our available one point one million dollars, it's something that I think would be. Uh, to be really helpful, this.
Right.
One of the things that every time I do the M S four, uh, during the year, I say to Tommy, I mean, there's a workshop. Tommy, we're gonna get hit with testing for nitrogen and phosphate, he'll say, I don't know, but it's like. The E P A requires, you're on a certain list, that you test, uh. Outfalls for nitrogen and phosphate. And you need a chemist or a good lab, because the amount of data that comes out of that. And not my turf, I mean, you really have to understand, so far, the only thing we've been cited for is, as far as pollutants. And it's that we have to list the rivers, the major, the three rivers, Sunken Brook. I think that's what it is, um, and the only thing that Dayton is cited for is, um. Bacteria, eh, which is basically septic waste or dirty rainwater runoff. So, uh, pathogens and, uh, biologic things. But if we ever get to the point that we have to test for nitrogen and phosphate, cause I've asked a couple of times, what's gonna happen to the Aggie school? I mean, this is a major farming operation on the Ton River, I'm sure they use fertilizers of some kind. So far, that has not been required, the other thing too is, uh, with this last filing. Uh, and with the new campus, one of the questions was to the E P A. How do we handle, uh, the north campus, cause it's self-contained, totally self-contained stormwater system? It does not run into wetlands, it does not run into a river, and it doesn't go into a, a storm system. And that really worked out Newton Tett, cause he can't wait to see this one, everything is staying on the site, but the concern was. Because of that self-contained site, the other site is the old one.
Right.
You know, although there's new stormwater infrastructure, but the good news from E P A was. Since the town of Dayton has such a good working relationship with the Aggie school. They don't have to be identified as a separate filer, and any data that you need, you can get from them. For example, cleaning basins or if they did that stuff, we would include it with ours, so for the time being, they don't have to be a standalone. And they're considered part of us, but there isn't much to report, but, uh, that's just another. That part of that training I took, the reason why we were over at the Sig, um, the Masquet River, checking outfalls. Is because they were showing demonstrations on how you actually get a sample of what's coming out of a pipe. Before it hits the river, and they talked about all the testing, and I kept thinking, oh, Tom, what did I tell Tommy about this? So fingers crossed, right now, we don't have to deal with that, but it's one of those things that it's out there. And you never know when they're gonna say, hey, Dayton, by the way, besides path, uh, pathogens and bacteria and stuff, you need to start testing for this, so.
Thank you, are there any further questions?
Uh, just one of Jim, um. Obviously, Jim, stormwater doesn't go away, uh, bylaws, so we have a situation where. You've got the board of health and so far we got stormwater underneath it, um. Is your answer to or opinion is that there should be somebody brought in?
Okay. I've been waiting for this up to you, so thank you.
You're welcome.
So, um, I'll respond in the following, as a member of local management. Um, and I love lobbying, I manage my department extremely well, um, along with a dozen other appointments that you three send my way. So, um, I, I think I have some skin in the game, and I'll answer your question directly, I think it's a multi-layered. Um, response that the board, so from the board of health have to take in looking at the problem. The first is, and surprisingly, I haven't discussed it yet today, and these have been very fruitful, by the way, I've enjoyed them. Is that in the short term, nothing has been said, done, or presented to take care of the people out there. Who are waiting weeks and weeks and weeks for the board of health, in its reviews, its perks, nothing like that. No one has ever suggested anything, so that's the first. No one has ever suggested anything. So that's the first problem. I think we need to address that. The second thing is, is I think this process needs to happen organically. We need to go through this, need to figure out what Dayton needs from its Board of Health and what our response and statutory are. Once we identify that, we have a, a three-member board that saves more than a few weeks, few months, and then continue work collectively to find out. What does the town need to do to offer to its people? And to what management processes? If the board can't handle, I, I give that management. Then I think we need to look at a manager or a department head. I don't think that embodies is the, is the answer. I think with good time management, just as I've proven in my office, you can do more with less. I run by the power of a full-time employee and a part-time office manager. I have a multitude of per diem inspectors under me who hopefully get the job done. But I, and I could never do it without them. But perhaps an answer to the Board of Health and staff, right? I'm not ready to make that suggestion yet. But I think two things, figure out how to serve the people's community right now because they need things from their Board of Health right now that they're not getting. And then secondly, once we get the two boards, your board established, get the Board of Health established, continue to identify. What the Board of Health needs to be responsible for. Then we can put together a roadmap of how do we get there? And through what management, what type of management oversight do we need to do that? Is there someone within the department that needs to manage it? Or is there someone maybe who, uh, who is above a couple of departments? Where they manage a few departments, maybe something like that. So, um, but I, but I haven't made. That, in my mind, I haven't made that full analysis yet.
Are you saying there is a backlog that needs to be corrected immediately?
Yes.
Okay, and then. The whole pro- big problem, big picture after that is done.
I'm surprised when we started these meetings that it wasn't suggested by the Board of Health then, because, you know, I'm not. You're getting complaints, I'm getting complaints, we're all getting complaints.
We. I'll speak for myself on this. I am well aware of it. And. I think the process. Will address that. When we take a look at what we're going to do. The Title V.
If I told people in my department that they could not get me out to their house for weeks on end. That is, that is inexcusable. We cannot do that.
I see that as a manpower issue.
It's a management issue, first.
Manpower.
Because if the Board of Health had managed themselves properly, the first thing they would have done is said, how do we correct this problem right now?
That's your opinion.
Well, let's, you pay, the taxpayers pay ourselves. I'm surprised the taxpayers haven't gotten that answer yet. So. I keep hearing that it's a manpower issue and it's a money issue and it's a management issue. And all of the um, solutions are a year away. Months away. We started having these discussions months ago. Yet, the problem hasn't been fixed. So I think it's two steps. It's. Serve the taxpayer immediately, get them so they get the services they require from their government, because this is their government, not ours. And secondly, what do we do to fix this problem, like Mrs. Gola said earlier, for the years to come?
Can I comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Pacheco.
One question I have, and then I'll comment. The Board of Health, we get on some, some more. What, what do we have? We get you guys full time. I know you're about forty hours, but. You dedicate your time to us. You dedicate, you, are you part of this?
I'm an agent for the Board of Health, but I have to tell you much more on health work.
Okay, so we got three, but basically two. And like you said, so.
We have a public health nurse.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we got free, but you're only got time to, right? If we're that far ahead of stormwater. Berkeley's doing enough. But to answer to the townspeople, like you said, I guess that. We gotta answer this problem first. We're so long, when we get this department working. We don't want to start at the bottom and work our way up. We want to start at the top, get it figured out, and then work our way up. To me, my opinion, I don't have coal pills. That is more important, but as I guess it. To serve the people of the town of Dayton. Than to worry about getting fined when we're already doing more than kind of Berkeley's doing.
That's backwards thinking and I would never, ever condone that.
No, it's just a talk.
No.
It's just way down.
You don't understand.
You don't have the laborers telling you.
A committee. And furthermore. The action, the work of the Stormwater Committee has argued and pointed out. What they're doing is good. What's been pointed out is. The Stormwater Committee's got a lot of work that it's still got to do. We're not up here by the same token because we're maintaining. And doing a little bit more each time, each time. We don't have the feds on our back. And to say we're worried about a fine, absolutely. You get fined, you know what you get for a fine? You get nothing. You get grief and you're told, do it, oh, we're gonna find you again. And I said that when I took this task on. As long as I'm doing this, there will not be any fines in the town of Dayton. It is not the Stormwater Committee function. We're looking at the work assignments for people working in an office that needs to be addressed.
Right.
We don't. We don't go, I don't put it, I don't go to Todd every day and say, I need you immediately. That's rare, but by the same token, the work he's required to do. Some of it he's gotta do. If we have the backlog that, that Mr. Aggie, excuse me, Aggie I referred to. My first question is. Is it Title V stuff? I'm hearing there's grant money here and grant money there. Is it worth considering hiring somebody temporarily who's qualified to do some catch-up? So that the townspeople who are waiting for stuff. Can get some stuff done. I'm not talking about a permanent job. But if there was somebody that can do Title V inspections or whatever else it is that's causing, that's got a backlog. Address the backlog. Is there money, grant money, or some, some other way to get it done? So that there's a catch-up, right? Stormwater Committee is not gonna stop operating where it is because we're not gonna go backwards. Cause it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. Or stop what you're doing. So what if we get fined? No, that's not gonna happen, guys. Not gonna happen. We're gonna maintain as best we can with the staff we have. And if some alleviation. Or rescheduling or some assistance for the people who work in that office every day. If that can be done, that isn't gonna, that's not gonna. Cause any problems with stormwater. But it's gonna provide some assistance and, and as, as Jim said, you gotta think about what the townspeople are expecting.
Well, that's exactly what I said. Like you said, we're gonna structure this in order to support that. If your department of the. Stormwater is constantly tasking on a time.
You're missing the point of stormwater management.
No, I'm talking about the point of.
It, you have to consider the priorities. It's a priority. We have been fined. This town has been fined. We don't wanna get fined again.
Okay.
Riddle it in. I'm sorry. I think it's time to riddle it in.
Every single taxpayer in the town pays a little bit of. When we're backlogged on a person putting up a building and the interest rates are going up, that one taxpayer is paying full burden. So it's better to spread burden about everybody. If we're not capable of doing it all. Let's start off top, get the good.
Let's look, are you getting some additional help temporarily with qualified people?
That's what I'm trying to say.
Touch stormwater.
Right. Is we don't touch stormwater and we're about to end.
One of the things that, you know, we've identified. Two problems. One, the issue is Saggy I spoke about. Title Fives and septic work. A- and. It's not a secret in town. I'd be curious, especially where budget proposals and discussions will. Will be starting relatively soon. Cause the holidays are coming and you know, most of. What's left of November and December. And then January, we're talking budget. Should the Board of Health take a look at? Potentially. Budgeting additional help. To complete Title V. And in septic work. And I, and I'll ask is, you know, from. From what I see, Board of Health, correct me if I'm wrong. Todd, your plate's pretty full.
That's what I'm trying to say.
You feel you've got the time to handle. All the requests for Title Fives and. Septic work and. Everything else you got on your plate.
At this point in time, yes. If you'd asked me a month ago, the answer was no. It ebbs and flows. We are inundated with perk applications during the drought and it back this up with perks. I normally don't do more than two perks in a week because I try and budget my time appropriately. But we have so many applications, I started doing perks three days a week because. The drought, the interest rates, everything else. But when I started doing perks more days in a week, it put me behind in plan reviews. So I got behind in plan reviews. Once they got past the perks, then I was able to start getting caught up in the plan reviews. So it, it ebbs and flows. It's like stormwater. Some weeks is thirty hours of stormwater and some weeks is zero. And our housing complaint comes in and, you know, you have to make a shot. So. It ebbs and flows. And again, as of right now, yes.
Now, if you. You brought in. Someone, Mr. Tennis. To assist when you're out. If we budgeted or you made a budget request for an assistant. Would that allow you to? Have a better handle on all of the jobs that you got?
Yes.
All the balls you're trying to.
Yes, well, this is part of the reason we wanted like the senior workout program for witnessing, you know, watching the, the clock go down on park tests. Mr. Pyros is doing some of it. He was watching the water go down. I would do the soil evaluation, but he would keep the, the clock. Um, we had the intern program and that was a hundred hours a year we were getting out of that, but that's been eliminated out of the budget. So we don't have that anymore. So it's just time. Um, to get things done. So yes, if more hours for the, the backup, then it would give me more time to do my stuff, yes. But it took us several years to get that backup position in the budget after asking multiple times, so.
As we mentioned before, that if we have somebody go up to do the purchase. The, the landlord is gonna pay that. It's not gonna be an increase to our budget. As Mr. Karen said. When we had somebody doing it before, they were not only making their paycheck, they were bringing revenue into the town. So if we do it in that sense, we're not looking to increase our budget. It's gonna make us, it's gonna make our budget come down.
Has the Board of Health had any discussions about doing this?
No, this is my first time.
This is literally his first minute of his meeting.
No, no, I, 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 I get it. And, and it's a joint meeting and I have not had the opportunity to have a meeting with just the Board of Health. On that, just, just a minute. Oh, I, I'd be. Curious if the Board of Health put together a plan because I've heard the complaints as well. A- and. From contractors and, and developers. I, I'm aware that there is a need.
Right.
Um, I personally feel. Board of Health needs some help in that area. It's not um. Making Todd more efficient in what he's doing. I think he's pretty straight out.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
But I'd be, I'd be curious. Just see if the Board of Health could put together a plan. To present to us. You know. To get preliminary approval, but obviously.
Oh, I, I.
That would be. A budgetary issue down the road.
Right.
Now, short term. Todd has said. When I say short term, the rest of this fiscal year. You feel you're in good shape to handle the requests that are coming?
Well, I say right now, but you asked me a month from now and I might be behind again, you know, so it, it, it comes and goes.
I have a very direct question. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but you're the senior.
Doesn't say a lot.
I, I'm gonna be still about twenty minutes. And obviously you can tell by the way I talk, I'm with passion, I'm here for the people, I do whatever I can. Why is the Board of Health okay with allowing the backlog to get this far behind? Where people have been waiting. Absorbant amounts of time and services from its department.
We're not okay with it. And Barbara has been saying. Constantly, we're behind, we need help, we need help, we need help.
Right.
And you're right, we shouldn't have just accepted that this process is gonna fix things because obviously this process is going to take a very long time. It may never end. Um. This meeting may never end.
But you made a good point.
We need to do something now. Um. Us just saying, we need help now, we need help now, was not enough. We need a plan. And I don't think we can do it on our own. And that's why we're here. So what is our next step gonna be? What are, what are we gonna do?
I, I'm just throwing this out there. You run your department the way you want to. I have found much success in running my department with per diem inspectors. First of all, it's all user-based fee structure. So my, my office runs in a possible because my fee structure covers costs as I expected, including my salary and my office standard salary. I don't know if you can do that, but I think when it comes to certain aspects of your responsibility, it's quite possible that you can do that. That does two things. First of all, you're not committed to a full-time employee. You don't have the benefits packages or requirements. There are still some, you know, perks that they get, but it's nowhere's near what a full-time employee does. And I don't have to worry about giving them full-time work. Cause they fully understand that they're on a non-call-as-needed basis. And like I said before, I could not do what I do with a thousand permits a year and over thirty-five hundred inspections if I didn't have the five or six people in our line. But all of those people are not paid by the taxpayer. They're paid by the people who need that service from my office. So. If I am charged with the management of your department, that's the first place I will look.
I- it, it doesn't solve the issue today, uh, which is two things. Uh. Whether stormwater should stay with. The Board of Health, which obviously it has to. Uh, so. That's off the table. The second thing I think that's come to light tonight is to address the situation that you're in. Uh, uh, unfortunately, we just can't go out and get per diem people and, and say. O- okay, now, user, you're gonna pay. A, a, an extra fee to cover this per diem.
But we already have, if I may, we already have fees in place. So yes, I think we could get a pretty respectable very.
I'm not saying you can't, uh, but, but can you charge a user fee? I- i- and make up.
May operate at a loss.
Well, that's the point. We're, we're gonna operate at a loss until that happens, which I'm all for because. The end is the resident who is paying the price right now. And again, not to get sidetracked. It was stormwater, but we now have an issue that we have to correct. And, and I don't think we should dwell on it tonight.
I agree.
I, I, I think it, it's gonna come in the next week or two, uh, so that we, we can get it corrected as quickly as we can. But um. I, I don't wanna get off track.
I, I think on that issue, if the Board of Health could put together a proposal. And come before us at the next meeting. You mentioned something in regards to stormwater. And so that we will have a little sense of closure on the issue of stormwater. You, we've heard the state make a recommendation that stormwater remain part of the Board of Health. Uh. I heard you. Say a minute ago that you also feel that way. Um. With that being said. I will entertain a motion. That stormwater continue. Under the current structure of the Board of Health.
Make a motion to.
Oh, I entertain a motion. We are looking at the different pieces of the Board of Health.
Correct.
And whether or not it should remain part of the Board of Health. Or become a separate entity or go to some other entity. And with that being said, based on our discussions and the recommendations that were made. The state, our discussions here tonight. Are we ready to decide? Where the stormwater.
Correct. I think, yeah, well, it's in the bylaws. We can't, we can't change the bylaw. You'll have to go before the, the residents. That won't be until June, but it's in the bylaws. Clearly, that stormwater is under the control of the, the Board of Health, so we can't. Uh, change that. We can do that in the future, but at this time, we, we can't change it.
Yes, there's something to go on.
Right, well, it's somebody you just said. Okay, okay.
I don't want it to be a question. This is just a statement. And what I'll do is that, this girl has put in a lot of time and a lot of departments. In this town and she's donated quite a bit of her town. She does an excellent job. She did an excellent job when she was sitting this, this. However. Management structure. We, we go from the selectmen to the Board of Health to the storm. Having stormwater tell us how to manage our department or what we need here would be like us coming to you and telling you how we need. how we need Mike Mullin to do something, how we need to change that. And we're, we're telling you how to do your job. I goes this way. You tell us how to do it. We go there and we deal with them and then we go down there.
Here's the thing, and I've heard it mentioned several times tonight, that when, when Mr. Pillings is needed, he goes to stormwater. He drops everything that the Board of Health, he's doing for the Board of Health, and he deals with stormwater. And the question I have is, unless the Board of Health objects, they're condoning it.
Correct.
So I think the Health should come up with some type of structure.
I agree.
As to Mr. Pillings' role. And if they can't, for whatever reason, then come to us and say, look, we need your help with this.
In my opinion, it's the same thing as me walking to Mr. Mullin's office, saying, I'm sorry that you're busy doing what you're doing, but I got a murder. You need to come with me now. And you're going to drop everything that you're doing. I don't have a right to go there.
But I've done that. Everybody does.
And try not but yeah, trying not to micromanage the Board of Health. Um, I, I think they should step up a bit and make the attempt to deal with this issue that since I've been on the board, I've heard every now and then.
Right.
I've certainly heard multiple times from Barbara saying, you know, stormwater is taking up so much of Todd's time. And I was like, why don't you guys deal with that?
Right.
I've never had an answer. And I, I think the Board of Health really needs to take a look at that. And again, if the Board of Health has, you know, for whatever reason, difficulty making that happen, then we can sit down.
One thing that I think we all need to understand, and like Mr. said, it's in the bylaws that the stormwater is under the Board of Health. Just like the Board of Health is under the Board of Select.
Right.
Stormwater should not be running the Board of Health. The Board of Health should be running.
I object. I strongly object. I was, you, I don't know what you were listening to when I started. I started talking about a management review I did, looking at the structure, going back historically. And I wanted everyone to understand where I think we dropped the ball, okay? Because we had trained staff and we just continued on. But obviously, Mr. Pyros cannot do the work anymore. I, it has never been my intent, and I stated that a couple of times. Stormwater Committee is not telling the Board of Health what to do. The Stormwater Committee is not a problem because the Stormwater Committee does its job. The problem is we have people in the office are overloaded. And one part of that overload is stormwater. So to say we're trying to tell them what to do, I don't know where they were when I made the statement, but I'll state it again, absolutely not.
But the Board of
Aside, guys, one year funny story, chuckle at this one. Before I became a selectman and going back to the era of Frank Torres, the Board of Selectment was, was selected the Board of Health and the Board of Public Welfare. That means they managed the, what do they call it, AFDC, you know, aged families with dependent children. When that was taken away, everyone was relieved, but it was solved because the state took it over. So what we're looking at here is we separated the Board of Selectment and Board of Health. We thought everything was fine. So what? There's a vacuum here because there's a lot of work that went with stormwater that isn't getting done. Okay?
Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you.
So the Board of Health could sit down and establish some perimeters for Todd's role. And could you do that and come back with recommendations to us?
Uh, can I make a motion that we put it on our agenda for the next meeting? That we discuss on coming up with what the selectmen have asked us to do with Todd's, at least to get it started.
I'll accept that motion.
So we'll be on the next agenda.
That's the summary.
Yeah, I, that's enough. Might be enough time.
Well, we only need forty-eight hours.
Okay, yep. Um, I stepped down and seconded that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't really catch that. I said, I've got agenda item for next meeting, but I didn't get what that item.
Could you repeat the item that you want us to do?
Prioritize.
What if Health established perimeters for the health agents' involvement with stormwater?
No, I thought you meant to do our, to
Prioritize.
Prioritize.
What we're doing.
But that health agent's going to do.
Correct.
Okay.
But you said stormwater.
But yeah, not regards to
Stormwater, well, the priorities, obviously, stormwater.
Right, so we're going to
One of those, but sorry. But there'll be perimeters as to
Right.
Based on the priorities. I mean, if you make stormwater your number one priority, then obviously his focus will be there. But if, if it's
I want to, I, I'd make motion in the assumption that we're going to be discussing the office and how we're going to restructure that toward solar.
I mean, that's your prerogative. But he is an employee. He works for technically, he's under your
Correct.
supervision. So you can determine.
Established perimeters for the health agents' involvement with stormwater. Then you said, no, it's the parameters for
For the, oh, the board.
The office.
I mean, it, it
Um, structure, right? I can't even write what I wrote. Um, prioritizing. You want to prioritize what you're doing.
What you guys doing, so we can figure out how we can help you guys.
And it's not just to stormwater. It's prioritizing the responsibilities and duties.
Right.
Yes.
Of all of the
Yep.
People.
Now, on the issue of the Title V.
They need to vote on it.
No, we didn't get to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Take the motion.
All right, you motioned. I seconded. Now to a vote.
I vote yes.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. I stepped down and I'm an aye. So we're all ayes.
We're all ayes.
Got it.
On the issue of the Title V and the septic.
Yes.
In this current fiscal year, you, do you see money available to help to be a seed to get this started ASAP?
No, I think we have a few options and I actually want to, I want to, I want to talk with our town accountant as well. Uh, probably first thing tomorrow, we do, I'm going to ask General Law, we do, there are very there are very prescribed reasons about why a town and how a town may establish a like essentially enterprise or like revolving from outside of a meeting. Uh, whether or not I've actually like setting something up like a like environmental inspections is something that qualifies as something uh that we can like really like stand up actually not having a town meeting. I like to be honest with you, like I'm not, so like I'm not actually sure if it fits the criteria. So I want to discuss that with her first of all. Uh, like if, I think if it isn't, if it's not an option, uh, we do have, we do have, like, we do have the ability to go to the reserve fund. Uh, Jim, I think, um, I like your budget, uh, for each of your inspectors of around seventy-five hundred dollars, please, right?
Um, yeah, a little more.
Yeah, yeah, one of that could be ninety-five and the other two are what, ninety-five hundred? Yes, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, so like we do, so like we do have that opportunity as well. Oh, you know, like really like, because I mean, what I think, oh, like I, oh, like I got out of the meeting tonight is that we want uh, we like to have a structure in place where we can deal with the ebbs and flows.
Right.
Uh, so when that, as we have, uh, we have, uh, we have a, uh, we have like a process that we can I can actually utilize, you know, yeah, like to mitigate, uh, really the impact so we can address things. So, uh, I so we have something in the here and now we need to address. And I think we can um have a few options about how we can uh, how we can address that in the short term. Um, and so, so if the so if the Board of Health is uh, meeting uh next on the eighth, but I think there was a potential like what is what, uh, meet on the twenty-ninth as well, this potential, yes.
A joint meeting or just us?
So so as of right now, there's a, there's a potential that the Board of Health can meet right now, like alone on the twenty-nine. Um, uh, maybe we have uh the ability. So, 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 I saw if the board wants to meet uh individually, say hypothetically, like at five o'clock and discuss a prioritization. Uh, and then we actually, and then actually we like come back in like a joint meeting to meet. Yeah, like at six maybe. Hopefully we'll have the opportunity where we can uh, uh, where we can have some answers about the revolving fund or oh, like anything to do with Title V and septic, and then we can go from there and uh, can actually like address that issue and come up with a game plan. Uh, uh, um, uh, progress that issue because the next thing, like on, oh, you know, like uh, yeah, like the next thing on a whole list of issues is that we go like it's actually Title V and septic anyways, so they're saying, look. So this is actually like a good segue into all those.
Nicole, you need more than an hour?
Well.
Probably.
And I As Mr. Mullin said, this is going to take times and steps to go forward. I don't think that we can get together in one meeting for an hour and have recommendations to you. I think it's going to need eight, two months for us before we're going to actually be able to give you honest recommendations. I mean, these are important decisions. If we just fade off the fly.
And, and I, I mean, I personally don't disagree. Like you're like a new member and I think you need time with the Board as well to so to really talk through these things. Uh, that makes it, I was only thinking of a way, uh, like that, once we have uh, once we have some information and can talk things through with the town accountant, a way to bring us
Right, right.
Um, so yeah, I mean.
I mean, we could, we could do that. I just don't think that we'd have any definite answers.
Okay.
We'll have some information so that we can talk about these things, so that you can almost add up on all four. Great.
Mr. Jim? I'm talking about fees and our, how you could pay for, um, generating some of those inspections. I reminded you of something. After that bylaw, when regs were passed with stormwater, Dagenreheobit announced they were going to have to replace their old sewer plant. And the proposal was a huge Title V system. It fell to the Stormwater Committee because it was neither conservation or planning board. So the one project that the Stormwater Committee actually got involved with permitting was that Title V system at Dagenreheobit. And what we did in order to figure out, how much are we going to charge them? I met with Joe Pacheco and I said, how much is the permit fee? He told me what the permit fee is. I said, how many inspections are you going to do? I mean, this was obviously a large project. Um, and he told me, I says, and what did we pay you? And I think it was twenty-five dollars for inspection. We added the fees like each inspection to that permit fee and collected the whole thing. So when the district came to town in that permit fee and we're, I forget how many inspections, but whatever Joe said he was going to do over a period of time, he did it. So the permit fee or whatever it is that is given or charged to people who are doing this, figure out how many inspections it's going to take depending upon the size. As I said, the, the DI systems, probably the biggest Title V we've had in town. But we did do that. And it was the one time the Stormwater Committee actually got involved with uh collecting money and issuing that permit.
I, I've heard Mr. Mullin use the word enterprises. And we've heard Mr. Agia mention how successful he's been able to establish. Uh, I really think the Board of Health needs to take a look at their permitting and, and structure and see, just as they, they're doing with the transfer station, of what increases, sorry, to make it sustainable.
Mm-hmm. We are in the process of that.
Um, so do we have a date?
Right. What I'm thinking based on all this, and I'm just, I'm just following here, rather than, so based on what mid uh, uh, based on this, based on what Mr. Pacheco mentioned, rather than have us all out for a night, uh, uh, maybe we'd like to have a night at home as well. So well, so a lot of us are coming back out on November thirtieth as well.
Right.
We're going to be here, uh, for the tax classification hearing, uh, first in the evening. So, but, so, but maybe the very next agenda item after that, I like will be enough date on, um, and recommendation on a potential path to forward based on our work with the town accountant.
In regards to the Title V issue, okay.
What I'd work for folks.
I thought Mr. Pacheco said it would probably take two meetings. To, for the, for the Board of Health to
So he said it would take like a few, uh, so he said, he said, I believe it would take a few meetings for the prioritization.
Right. We'll get you something. We'll really get you something on the first meeting.
So, but as a way to deal with the here and now and the Title V and
Title V, right.
Just this issue.
Yes, not the storm.
We don't need to go through the works, uh, to bring us up to date with the Title V in, um.
Uh, yeah, like it's like an option as a way really like we can resolve. And so we can resolve the Title V and septic issue only because that is a version.
That worked for you, Mr. Pacheco?
Yes.
Yes.
Pay for, can't do it. Something's fine. That's really essential. You know what he adds to that.
Right.
Yeah. And I mean, whether also, uh, we have any flexibility related to deficit spending, then to have like a special um, especially in front of the annual, basically to like establish show revolving fund.
Right.
Uh, like in a weird or whatever, but uh, we have a strict town accountant now, so.
And also it'll give you the opportunity to put that in your budget for the next fiscal year as well. Meet the need. Um, unless there's any further discussion, um, I'd like to move on to the two thousand twenty-three transfer station recommendation fee schedule increase for the Board of Selectmen. This is the second reading. I'm assuming the Board of Health has, is not making any changes to the recommendations we have before us, is that correct?
You feel there's any changes?
No.
Okay. Um, the only question that I have, has the Board of Health had any discussion about the sticker fees? Or is that still something before the solid?
Looking for the Solid Waste Committee to comment on that. They put a lot of work into these.
Okay.
Um, and I really respect that they did that, and I want to see what they have to say about the sticker.
Which has not come up yet.
Oh.
And we just, I think, just like the other night, it, it's been surface scratched, but not dug deep yet.
Um, personal comment and based on my discussions with the chairman of the Solid Ways, Mr. Karen, members of the Board of Health, guys did a great job. He seemed very fair. Uh, seemed pretty doable. Mr. Pacheco, did you have any questions or concerns about what is before us, be wise?
These fees don't, what I'm concerned about is the fee to be determined at attendance discretion under miscellaneous items not listed. Uh, I'm just concerned that that's going to cause some friction uh with the attendant sometimes.
I, I think he was the one who suggested it. Be worded that way.
It's been worded that way for as long as I've been here. Because when somebody walks in, is it a half a trail load or is it a full trail load or what comes out of it? So it's always been a day discretion. So if they say it's a half a trail load instead of quarter of a trail, which isn't even there.
Yeah.
That's what it's, it's been about the volume, not about the dollar. Usually, but it's, it had to be at their discretion because there's always items that come in that are not on a list somewhere.
Right.
So.
The, so the recommendation of solid waste is quote unquote fee to be term at attendance discretion? Did they vote on that?
That was always there. They're not changing that. Only the stuff in
That was always there. They're not changing that. Only the stuff in the red is what they were changing.
And the board of health is supporting that as well.
Yeah, we weren't changing that. Correct.
Has the board of health acted or made any recommendations on these recommendations yet, or are they planning to do that on the twenty ninth as well?
It was my understanding that we had discussed that we were going to have the readings of them, see if any residents came forward with any kind of issues and then we were going to vote on these.
Alright. So I kept, so I'm just like, have the final reading and approve this on the thirtieth. So we'll have a recommend, so we would have the recommendation from the board of health on the twenty ninth?
Yeah, as long as it's on the agenda, yes.
Okay.
Point of order. If these rec, if these regulations changes are being proposed by the board of health. It is the board of health that should read them three times. And then based on whether or not there's an order, they then recommend to the board of selectmen. Selectmen should not be presenting this ahead of the board of health because they got it from their solid waste committee. So procedurally, it's got to go to them first and they should be conducting the public readings. What we used to do, uh, for other kinds of things, um. For example, um, a column policies and procedures. When the town administrator drafted one and it would come to the board of selectmen. We would read the entire thing once and say to the people, we're going to read this twice more. If you want to have any input, get back to the T A. And then what we would do is at this next meeting, the second reading, we would say, uh, has there been any feedback from the public or anybody? And if there was, we would discuss it. We wouldn't read it again in its entirety. We would refer to the, the document. You know how at town meeting we say as written? And then it would be read one more time and the board of selectmen would vote to approve it. The steps that you're taking, or I should say, the point of order is this should not be going to the board of selectmen until you're. Uh, since the solid waste committee has come up with something and given it to the board of health. It's up to the board of health to review those. Read it three times and let's assume everything's okay. You guys vote to approve it and then you send it to the board of selectmen. It doesn't go to them first. That's, that's, they're the executive board. You're a, you're a committee, a board underneath them. You're subordinate to them.
Mm hmm.
Therefore, the reading should take place at the board of health meetings.
I thought they did it because, and you'd probably know better than I do, is because the selectmen were the only group that could recommend the fees. Or establish what the fees were.
Just that is, but this is what, this is what. Again, the, the board committee, commission, whatever. They're the ones that are proposing this. They do the reading to get the public input. Assuming they vote, okay, it's good. We vote to recommend this to the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen get it. The hearings have been held of the three readings, whatever you call, want to call them, okay? But the governing board, the executive board can't be putting it out there because the subordinate board has not made a decision yet.
Right.
It's high rise.
Just again.
Yeah, I sent an email out to this. I didn't use such eloquency, but I said the same thing. I felt that the board of health should have acted on this. Whether or not they do the three readings or not, I'm not privy to that responsibility. But I was upset that the board of health did not act on it because they need to be the principal actor, send it over to the B O S.
Well, we didn't understand that in your email. Um, I understood that I was told that if we were going to make any changes, we didn't want to vote in right away. So we thought that we were leaving it open in case any residents had any concerns. Um, and much of what you said, your email was actually sent, said in that meeting. So when you get a chance from that finally posted, I encourage you to watch it.
Okay.
So Nancy, does the board of selectmen have to read it an additional three times?
No.
So once.
What I would say is when it's premature to be on your agenda.
Right. I understand that now.
So. Let's say stormwater committee wants something done, alright? And we, we vote to do it. We've got to go to the board of health and say to them, this is what we want to do. They have to look at it and act on it. If they agree, yeah, and they vote yes, it goes to the board of selectmen.
Okay.
Stormwater committee can't come to you and say, hey, we want these changes made because you're going to say, wait a minute.
Who are you?
Subordinate to the board of health. We're going to go to them first.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mullin.
So yeah.
Are we under any mandate that the board of health has to do three readings?
No, like in the three readings was only came up within the essence of really transparency. So we got it out there like and it was like fully understood by a resident.
That's.
Just a minute, Mrs. Skula. I will recognize you in short.
So, so, uh, uh, so, so, but the issue is the recommendation for the increases came from the solid waste. Came from the solid waste committee on October nineteenth. Like it was, like it was hoped and I thought it was the, and I thought it was the expectation. That at the border house, that at the border house, the following meeting. Uh, that they would act, that they would actually take action on what the solid waste committee. Had to pose and then at that point. Yeah, like at that point, oh, and at that point, send it on, at that point, send it on for recommendation to the selectmen.
Right. Isn't that why there's a column board of health recommended?
Yes, and that hasn't happened.
That has not.
So like, and that's, and that's actually part of the challenge because we're facing, uh, we're facing revenue and expense issues.
Right.
So, and that is really the reason, oh, you know, like in my view that, oh, yeah, that the selectmen really took the ball like in the. Oh, like it has been moving this. Yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like it has been moving it forward because every day that actually.
Right.
So I, so I kept, so every day that goes on, we don't have these updated fees, we're losing more money.
Right.
Like we wanted to have these in place by, I believe, January first.
Correct.
In speaking to. This is, um. Katavia, who's been here? A board of health who was down to two members before Mr. Pacheco came on board. Mrs. Katavia had serious heart issues, was in the hospital. They couldn't meet. In speaking with Mrs. Katavia, I as chairman. Put it out there for the public and use the, the selectman's office as a way to inform the public. Obviously, we're not going to move as a board of selectmen without a recommendation from the board of health. This evening, we have heard from Mr. Mullin that we are under no statutory mandate. For the board of health to do three readings. At this point in time. It's in the hands of the board of health. Mr. Mullin gave you a target date. Mr. Pacheco, I believe you said you think we, you could meet that date. Is that correct?
This is.
Well, that was, you're talking about three readings?
Not though, a recommendation.
One meeting, one vote to recommend these fees.
Yeah, yes, yes.
On the twenty ninth. I guess we could also meet on the thirtieth just before the meeting too, but the twenty ninth would be better.
Okay. No, I can do that.
Can you make it happen?
Yes.
And it is the chairman's, and it is the chairman's prerogative to set the agenda.
Yep.
So if the board of health could meet their end of the. It will be on the next board of selectmen agenda for final vote.
I, I would suggest that we do the second reading tonight. If the board of health doesn't change its fees, we can do the third and final reading on the thirtieth.
And vote.
And vote on it. Well, get the recommendation from the board of health from November twenty ninth and on the thirtieth. They haven't changed. I think if they change something, then we, we step one again. We're going to go back and.
So we would get the recommendations on the thirtieth. They would recommend.
Right, on the twenty ninth.
They're going to spell it on the twenty ninth.
I think they would give it, but I think we can do the second reading.
Right.
As far as the steps, they need to act on that on the twenty ninth.
Right.
We need to change it first. That's something different. We have to have pre-readings on the sticker.
Todd, when is the next? Um, solid waste committee meeting?
Monday, the twenty.
Monday, the twenty, at four o'clock?
Eight.
Uh, twenty eighth, right. So we meet at one, just.
Yes, one on the twenty eighth and then, but that'll be followed by the evening of the twenty. One of the things that was also discussed with you guys at the sticker fee, uh, based on the timeline and based on. The fact that, um, many residents pick up. There were, why? I'm sorry, the calendar year twenty twenty three's. The calendar year twenty twenty three stickers, uh, like right, uh, right after the Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, the, uh, the, uh, the what, uh, there was a dis. Oh, yeah, there was a discussion about adding in, oh, like any, oh, oh. Oh, like, oh, 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 uh, but like any. Uh, what type of recommendation regarding the sticker, if there is any to the. Oh, yeah, like to actually this. Oh, yeah, uh, yeah, to actually this documents. Uh, so like every, uh, so like everything in total with any sticker recommendation could be considered. Uh, on November thirtieth as well. So everything is done in one way.
Thank you. As a board of health, I want to make a motion that we accept these rates, these, and we recommend it to the board of selectmen. Correct, second.
We.
It's on our agenda.
That's not on the agenda. It's not on your agenda.
It's only.
Uh, no, that's fine.
Okay.
But, uh, it should be on the twenty ninth.
On the twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth.
Okay. We'll take care of it. Mr. Mullin has said that. You know, because there is not a statutory mandate. You're within, within your right to take it up on the twenty ninth. It's not on this agenda, so you can't vote on it tonight. My concern based on the fact that you guys had problems, the board of health. That weren't of your control. Okay. And as a result, you couldn't get a quorum, you couldn't meet. I get that, but from my end, I saw it as a need for the public to know what was going on. And that's why the board of selectmen. Worked with John. He met Smellin, met myself, kept everyone in loop, started ways to have meetings. So we could get it out to the public, so the public could have input.
My opinion, this is my opinion on the goals. That you guys do the second reading, you did the first one, do the second one tonight. You also said no public input, so we shouldn't hear anybody from the public saying how we're going to handle this.
That is correct. Do I?
He said we follow them.
Yes, I do.
Excuse me. You said no public input. If this.
We haven't voted yet.
No, yes, certainly.
Is this, you're going to speak about stormwater?
This is, uh, Mr. Pacheco, I am going to allow him to. Express their concerns.
If you go back into the policy manual, town of Dyke. I would say, look to see if the board of the A. Put that in the policy as part of what we accepted. Going back to two thousand and seven, whenever something came up. Uh, changing fees or whatever procedures, we would, um, read it three times. Okay, we'd read it the first time and then we'd refer to it. And but it was to let the public know what's happening. So that they would have an opportunity for input. Don't confuse it with a public meeting. All right, a public meeting or a public hearing as opposed to the kind that you must have statutorily. If we're going to do a bylaw, we have to have a public hearing advertising the paper and all that. If we're going to change stormwater regulations, we have to have a informational meeting. But what we're talking about is the board of selectmen going way back. It was a policy and a practice that was in place. So no, it's not statutorily, but I think you need to look at the policy book that was voted on by the board of selectmen and adopt it. So that's.
Thank you.
Point.
Thank you, Mrs. Gola. Mr. Mullin.
Yes, so like I just, so like I, so I just want to try to clear this whole issue up. Like I'm actually like in the policy handbook now, like it says, like any draft policies or procedures shall be read at least once. At a public meeting and made available to the public and town officials for review and comment. At the board, the board shall place the policy on the agenda no fewer than three times before voting to adopt. Uh, the board by majority vote, they choose to dispense with the reading of the policy at an open meeting, but may not waive. At the condition of reviewing the policy. Uh, I got three duly person meetings and because there's no fee schedule in. Uh, the policy handbook, I wouldn't view the fees as a policy. Uh, the policy handbook specifically, um, 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 speaks to what proposed, asked.
Mr. Mullin, thank you. With that being said, I will entertain a motion. Um. For a vote. On the second reading of. The following. Ox spring T D Q. An increase from fifteen dollars to forty dollars. Mattresses T D Q. K, meaning twin, double, queen, king, from fifteen dollars to forty dollars. Trip sized mattress, establish a fee of twenty dollars. An ottoman, ten dollars. Sectional couch from twenty to forty dollars. Sofa couch from fifteen to twenty dollars. Television console from twenty dollars to forty dollars. A toilet or sink, ten dollars. Car tire from five to ten dollars. Truck tire from ten to fifteen dollars. Tractor tire. Fifteen to twenty dollars. Change. A single axle trailer fees to fifty dollars. A change double axle sixteen feet max to one hundred dollars. Under bulky items, including rigid plastic. Change to miscellaneous items not listed. A half pickup truck load would be increased from ten dollars to twenty five dollars. A full pickup truck load would be increased from twenty dollars to fifty dollars. And this fee would be determined at the attendance discretion. We also have under construction debris. An increase of full pickup truck load from seventy five dollars to one hundred dollars for eight. Feet or less. Do I have that in a form of a motion to accept? For the second.
We need a motion, do we?
Let's say just have to read it.
Just have to read it. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, new business. Anything under new business?
Just schedule the date of the next joint meeting.
Okay. Smellin.
Oh.
So be it.
Um. I was recalling up on what Ms., uh, Mr. Pacheco mentioned earlier. Uh, the next regular board of health meeting is December eighth.
I believe so.
December eighth, is that what you said?
There's data December eighth, yeah.
That's, that's your regular meeting.
But we're going to meet on the twenty ninth. That will be a special meeting.
And, yeah, so, yeah, special.
Yeah.
So, so, but December eighth would be the first time, um, uh, with Ms., uh, with Paul as a member of the board. That they can like get into a prioritization, uh, uh, my discussion. So. Um, um, did we want to meet to be gassed at that?
Wait, I think, I think November twenty ninth, we were going to meet. Was that, was that our prioritizing?
Yeah.
One, oh, wait, so the twenty ninth, then the eighth just happened to be our regular meeting date.
Right. What about Monday, the twelfth? And that way the board will be able to meet on both the twenty ninth and the, and we could, and we could follow. On the twelfth after that is the talk one with, uh, Mr. Barry.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
We were looking at the transfer station. Now regarding. We were looking at the transfer station. Now, regarding that. Should we bring solid waste as well? Or did you want to do that separately?
That seems that should be separate. Is that, is that too much at once?
Yeah, I think so.
What I recommend is I, so like if the solid waste committee is having a meeting on the twenty. On the twenty eighth, I mean, we, so like we can ask the chair if we can add to that agenda. Uh, like any, uh, any type of initial recommendations that the committee wants to make. Uh, you know, about to this joint meeting process. Um, but I think in the meantime, I mean, already we have one, two, three, uh. Like four, one, two, yeah, four people here anyway, so I will be well represented.
Right. The um. Keeping it separate so that. It doesn't get sidetracked like tonight with having two issues brought before the selectmen. It would just be a. Transfer station meeting.
On the twelve.
Uh.
Right?
But we, when it, when it comes before the selectmen.
One, um, on the twelfth, um.
It's a joint meeting.
Wouldn't they come?
It'll be a joint meeting, but we won't have. We won't, we don't include, we should not include solid races under. Solid Waste Committee.
It's going to be hard not to include the solid waste because they're already going to be, the majority are going to already be.
Be here. I I just didn't want to get sidetracked.
I, I don't see that happening because the issues are quite different.
Yeah.
Up to us, Russ.
Mr. Perry will be, also have to be there too, so he's another member.
Right.
I didn't want her.
Okay.
Because if you didn't, you would be in the entity's being set up support and we all net solid, we get similar to that. It's like.
Transfer, we'll be here too, right? So that's six members, five.
You're not posted as always.
Right.
Okay. Putting that.
So, but we all seem to have. Does it?
That's fine, but yeah.
Maybe with the timeliness of everything you were thinking, you know? So I'm not sure, do we want to follow up on that? I can, what our plan is to address that issue at the beginning of the meeting, so we have some. Uh, closure, I guess, and then.
Yes.
Forward into. It's all amazing.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, can you repeat what we were following up on? I'm sorry.
That's if they have a recommendation after two meetings.
Right.
May take longer about your.
The prior prioritization, yeah.
Concern is to have a meeting with the solid waste committee and discuss with you about the transfer station all in one night.
Yep, right. The the role of solid waste in that discussion isn't going to be that big. Because the solid waste committee helps what help, they also help the transfer station.
Because it's just.
Primary focus of that meeting is going to be who. Is the transfer station going to be under the. Highway Department? Or the Board of Health, or continue as it is with both?
Yeah, right now, Mr. Pacheco is not directly under the Board of Health, nor is it under the Highway Department. It doesn't exist on the town organization.
Oh.
Mm hmm.
So we've been doing some of it, Mr. Perry has been doing some of it.
Yeah, I know that uh, it's been shared, but so my, my only concern again is.
Question.
Why put from Mr. Perry? Because it's coming underneath us.
The budget is under us, yes. But Stormwater budget's under Mr. Perry, but Stormwater's under the Board of Health, so go pay it.
Okay.
The question's going to be, Mr. Perry, do you want it? What else do you want it? And.
Wants it.
It might be a another plan that I'm not aware of, but we'll, in that, and then we'll take a vote.
Why to take it?
I second that.
Thanks. I don't, I don't see that this is solid waste. They're there to help. So if it ends up being, goes to the Highway Department, there's still an E, but there's solid waste committee for all the mandates to do. You know what I mean? I know, their roles kind of. Support.
I said, I'm just talking, thinking about the budget. If it was under our budget, but we're pushing around Tom Perry.
Right now, it is. But after that meeting, it may change for the next years. You know what I'm saying? I, I, that I don't know.
So I might go under his budget.
Mm hmm.
So I might come under his budget after that.
It could be.
Right.
But I don't, you know, I mean, both sides are going to make an argument. I don't know. But I might come in and say, fine, Tom wants it, he can have it. I I don't know, you know, but that's going to be up to you guys to. Come in and.
Three days as a team.
Right.
Oh.
So. Um. So we're all set on December twelfth?
Twelfth.
At um, six P M, right?
So that work for you?
Yes, okay.
Anything further? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I shall move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chief of.
Aye.
Yeah, Chairman Hall, is it aye?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Put down and second that.
Aye.
And then a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Or adjourned at nine seventeen.